Okay, meeting is being recorded. Uh, so we will get started. Uh, seven o'clock, um, welcome to the June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three school committee meeting. All members are in attendance with the exception of Mr. Fennelly. And now we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. If you'd like, do it along with me, but you can also not because I remember from our past meetings that it was difficult to all be in sync on Zoom, uh, doing the pledge of allegiance. So, uh, we'll make that, make that optional.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Before we move to any of our, um, more regular business, uh, we want to take a moment and acknowledge that this is Audrey's last meeting. And it seemed even though we've given a little formal recognition, uh, at a prior meeting with a certificate, uh, and gift cards, um, for providing the reports to us all year long, along with Maddie about goings on at the high school. Uh, but Audrey, of course, did more than that this year, um, sitting with us at the table and, uh, giving a lot of, uh, great insight and comments, uh, and really playing, uh, you know, a new role that we haven't had a student play, um, at least since I think in any of our, in any of our memories on the, on the school committee. Uh, so want to again acknowledge, uh, that this is the last meeting and, uh, and that, uh, we, we wish you great luck in the fall. Um, and, uh, that, uh, it's been a pleasure and a joy having you with us, uh, and we hope that this is something that we will, uh, continue on doing, uh, going forward. Uh, would anyone else like to make, uh, any comments? Um, yes, Ms. Burns.
Audrey, I just wanna thank you for, um, for taking the time to serve with us and to taking that, um, first step. Because I, I, I am so grateful. We've never had and such involvement by the student body, and I, I think it only adds to the work that we do, um, and certainly, uh, brings forth, um, a whole different perspective uh, to our discussions. And I, I, I can't thank you enough because that's such an invaluable, um, aspect that you've brought to our meetings, and I want to thank you and wish you all the very best in our in-depth, in your future endeavors. I know you'll succeed it no matter what you do. And I just thank you for your time.
Uh, Mr. Turner, you had your.
I was gonna say almost like ninety-nine percent of the words. So just thank you very much, all of your effort to get here and then all your effort while you've been here. It's been fantastic. Thank you. But I thank you, MJ, for the good words.
Uh, Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, I just wanna, um, again, thank you much of what other people have said, but just sort of taking, um, this initiative and really, um, setting up a, a new precedent, I think, in Wilmington. I think that's gonna be sort of the legacy. Um, here, so, um, thank you for, for all you've done and being part of this.
Uh, and Dr. Brand.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale, and, um, Audrey, thank you for, uh, to echo the words of, uh, uh, all of those of others, but, but also really for setting the bar so high for us, you know, when, when this idea emerged, um, I, I suspect that many had differing sort of thoughts around what the student representation could be and how that would look. Obviously, it's, um, uh, it's, it's a rather unique, uh, environment in which to integrate student voice and student presence into, uh, these conversations around some topics that are, um, not always so, uh, exciting, uh, and invigorating, but you have done an amazing job to set the bar tremendously high, I think, and, um, have helped pave the way for, uh, those that will follow in some big shoes to fill for sure, but thank you for, um, thank you for your work and your commitment to, uh, our committee and to our community, uh, and really paving a pathway for hopefully many students to follow. So thank you so much, Audrey.
Uh, and beforehand, um, I asked Audrey if they would like to, uh, say a few words about what the experience has been like, uh, which, uh, which they agreed to.
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you all for being like so open to trying this, and it's been a really great experience, and it was great, the first meeting where I came in and like kind of gave my pitch and the reaction was kind of like, okay, well, how do we get this started right now? And that was really awesome. So it's just been really cool to experience being on this committee versus just watching it and getting to be a part of the discussions. And I'm so excited to see where it goes next year, too. I've already told like everyone who's involved with it, like make sure you keep in touch with me, tell me what's going on and what's happening because we've come a long way this year, but there's also so much more, uh, we can be doing, and I'm really excited to see what happens. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. All right, that moves us into the consent agenda, uh, and the first item is approval of minutes, um, but I think, uh, Mr. Mercaldi, that you had a comment on the minutes.
Yes, I did. Um, yeah, I was thinking when I, I, I was reading the minutes that there was a lot of good discussion, uh, at the last meeting about how us as a school committee would like to see a parallel track of options for the West in addition to the North, and I was wondering if those could please be included into the meeting minutes. I know we didn't take a vote, but I know there were several members of the school committee that I think voiced approval of that, and, uh, Selectman, uh, De Palma, uh, gave the public comment, which was captured in the notes, but I was thinking that it could be good to have, uh, the school committee's voice also be captured in the meeting minutes, uh, voicing, uh, support of that.
Uh, so if there isn't objection, um, I would move that we, uh, approve the minutes with an addition to reflect the school committee's support of pursuing, um, options on the west side of town as well to reflect our discussion from there.
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, and that is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Bryson, for your use of Zoom's, uh, tool, a little, uh, gestures there. Uh, all right, so that is approved unanimously. Uh, next on the, uh, agenda is the disposal of items at the West Intermediate School. Um, do I have a motion? Uh, motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Mercaldi, uh, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Uh, then we have disposal of surplus materials from the Shawshing School. Um, do I have a motion to approve? Motion from Ms. Burns and seconded by Mr. Mercaldi, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Uh, and then we have, uh, approval of the W H S, uh, handbook, uh, second reading and approval. Um, before we take the motion for that, uh, does anyone have any questions or comments on the high school handbook? Uh, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, quick one. So with regard to some of the conversation about the section on lunch and breakfast, will we, uh, just need to amend it whenever we have better information on what that'll look like?
Uh, you mean as far as like the, whether the state will fund free lunches?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think that will probably just have to go, um, go in as an amendment that we'll have to make a change. I, I'm not sure if we're legally required to make that change, but, um, I think we can, if, if that, if that passes through the legislature, then, um, then I think we would just reflect that, um, through, uh, through an alteration. But, but obviously, we don't know that yet, so we have to, have to go with what we currently know. Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the high school handbook? Uh, we have motion by Ms. Burns, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Uh, then we have some warrants, uh, general fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two revolving fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty, local ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six, and food service sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine of a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Turner, second by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Uh, then we have payroll for June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three of a motion. Motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And that is unanimous. And then we have, uh, special education sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, and sixty-three. Motion for approval. We have motion by Mr. Samaha, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And we have five in favor with an abstention from Ms. Burns. And that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Dr. Brand. Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, and good evening, everyone. Uh, there's just one item, uh, listed under this agenda tonight, uh, for this, uh, portion of the, uh, the meeting, but I will add a second one. Uh, but to start with, uh, the update on the, um, middle school construction in, in your packet, there is a a memo that provides, um, you with an update on, uh, the, uh, various activity that has either begun, um, already uh, or that is set to begin. Uh, at the conclusion of school, uh, things really were, uh, positioned to ramp up fairly quickly, uh, to start with the construction at the middle school in order to bring about the addition of the, uh, restroom facilities to support the Wildwood moving to the middle school. Um, as you'll note, uh, in the memo, we have a general contractor in place. When I say we, both the district and the town, of course, we thank Mr. Hooper, who has really been, uh, shouldering, uh, an awful lot of this activity and work more recently. Um, Eagle Point Builders is the general contractor for this project, and they're out of Belmont, Massachusetts. The designer is Doran Whittier, um, obviously a firm that we, as a community, have gotten to know well and continue to partner with them. Uh, the work we can tell you has already begun, um, and this was, as we've discussed previously, really, uh, very intentional to not lose any time uh, to move, uh, to make the moves that are necessary to free up that space, and things are underway, um, starting, uh, I think, uh, late last week. You can see the general timeline for the construction for the restroom facilities. Uh, we are again very, very hopeful that with the, uh, fact that work has begun already, we should be at a good point come the middle to, uh, first part to the middle of August, in which that space will be ready. As has been mentioned previously, though, if there are delays, which we're hopeful that there are not, but obviously it's construction, and that can be possible. Uh, the one thing that we believe firmly we have going for us is that anything that will be sort of, um, making its way into getting ready for the start of the school year might be punch list items, uh, if you will, and the worst case scenario, if that restroom facility is not ready to go, uh, at the very beginning of school, we can come up with a, uh, an interim plan to support the Wildwood, uh, student use of the restroom facilities in the middle school. So we are, uh, we're confident, and I, and I'm not concerned. Um, certainly, there's no reason to be concerned at this point, um, given the start that we've got. There's an awful lot of other moving pieces to this project is, um, and this relocation, as you've been made aware of, and I tried to outline those in the, uh, in the memo. There's a lot of movement happening, and we again are thankful for the support of our town's, um, public, uh, buildings crew. They have been uh, hard at work and will continue to be so to make all of the moves possible. Um, I do note that the activity as on the outdoor play space has already begun. If you've been by the, uh, or on the Carter Lane campus, you will have seen that. Uh, we thank, uh, Jamie McGoldy for his, uh, partnership in this effort. Uh, things are moving forward, and he is hopeful, um, and believes fully that this, uh, the play space will be ready to go. Uh, certainly in August, actually, well before the start, uh, of school. And a final note, just, uh, to bring attention to, I think, for both the committee and certainly for the community at, at large. Um, we are, eh, we are very, very confident, um, that we will, this plan will allow us to support the operation of four schools and four learning communities on Carter Lane campus, and those four schools, of course, include the Betwell, uh, the West, uh, the middle school and the Wildwood. One of the things that we do hold some concern about is parking. Um, and we are going to, uh, we have, we've had a number of meetings on this point. Um, we are really going to be stressing, uh, or straining the parking availability that's there on Carter Lane campus. So we're, we're gonna have to be very mindful of this moving forward during this interim time period. Mindful in the sense of making sure that we're not having, you know, more than one event that's gonna bring in a larger crowd, um, during the school day. Mindful of thinking about how we can best utilize the spaces by allocating, um, certain parking areas for staff. It's gonna be tight on that campus. We have enough parking spaces for all staff. We will have modest amounts for visitors, but not a lot of extra spaces. So, uh, it's something that, um, uh, we will work closely with police and fire on in our, uh, DPW as we move forward. So let me pause there. Um, if there are any questions on the, uh, W M S construction project, the Wildwood transition, transition to Carter Lane.
Mr. Smaha.
Thank you. Um, I thank you for the report. Um, one of the things that, um, I've been thinking about too, I, and I appreciate the, the update on the, you know, sort of the worst case scenario restroom situation. I think that, um, glad to hear that there's uh, a plan in, in place for that because anybody's been involved in construction projects knows that they don't always go according to plan. Um, the second thing too is with the start times at the school for, for all four schools that are gonna be on Carter Lane, um, they're gonna be staggered enough where we're not gonna see, uh, tra- I mean, traffic will probably be a lot, you know, a lot more difficult, uh, you know, in that area, but it's not like, I just wanna remind people, it's not like everybody's gonna be getting to school at the same time. Um, so like for drop-offs and, and all of that stuff too. So I just wanna remind people of that. I thank you.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you for raising that. We, we've probably had, when I say we, I mean, the, uh, principals of those four schools, my, and, and myself, we probably had maybe three, four meetings already on this in terms of parking, but also a- and with Ms. Ferretta, uh, in terms of transportation. You, you know, there are, there are no concerns because of the overlapping schedules with the new times. So, so as Mr. Smaha, as you point out, that it's not the case that all four communities will be, um, you know, arriving at the same time, uh, you, you know, but I think we can also all, uh, appreciate that the first, you know, probably couple of weeks at the beginning of school year is gonna be a little bumpy. Um, you know, we are undertaking obviously a fairly massive change to our, uh, to our operations with the start time change, and I'm sure that that will be felt on the campus at Carter Lane. I'm sure that that will be felt throughout other communities as well, too, but we, we are confident that with the, um, uh, with, with the schedules that they're designed, there shouldn't, once those things settle in, we, we should be fine in terms of access for parent guardians, uh, for buses, certainly, and for staff, so.
Mr. Mercaldi.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I was wondering if, what your communication plan's gonna be like with the community, uh, throughout the summer?
Yeah, so, um, th- thank you for that. So we, uh, it's not lost upon any of us, uh, certainly that we, um, a lot of work and a lot of attention and time obviously was um, centered around the, uh, what is the ultimate change for the start times, but, uh, we, well, we, we know that we've, we've put forth this communication already. We, we know that that may have been lost to many families. We have new families coming to us. So as we hit the first part of August, um, the very first part of August, as we start to ramp out, uh, ramp up our communications around the start of the next school year. Uh, we will, through my office in particular, but also through our principals, make extra, uh, attention to make sure that our families and our community at large are well aware of the fact that our changes and, and start times are happening. And we'll make, uh, special attention as well for the changes in, in, um, transportation specifically. Ms. Ferretta has a, a really wonderful handle, a firm handle on all of this. She has obviously vetted this, uh, umpteen times, it's confident that what, you know, has been proposed here will work, but we'll make sure that families are, are aware of this. Uh, we'll make sure that this is included in our principal newsletters as well as they start to go out for the start of school. We'll try and explore every possible channel we can to make sure that, um, there's, there's no one who's forgotten about the fact that, um, things are changing in terms of start times in Wilmington.
Great, thank you. And then just to follow up, was wondering, uh, if, uh, the school committee could be offered a tour of the facility, um, as it gets closer towards the end of construction, kind of maybe around that punch out last time?
Yeah, cer- certainly can. We can certainly facilitate that. Uh, we're not expecting, uh, to have sort of access, if you will, until probably, if, if all things go as scheduled to the, towards the first part of August, but certainly that's something that we can facilitate. Uh, I know that, uh, we'll work closely with our contractors and obviously, uh, uh, public buildings to make sure that, uh, uh, accessing that is, you know, s- is safe and appropriate for the timeline, but we can certainly facilitate that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Burns.
If, um, other board members don't have any immediate questions, I just wanna just alert you, um, Straxdale, that I'm seeing a remaining meeting time of six minutes and twenty-one seconds. I didn't know if anybody else was seeing the same.
Yeah, that, that came up as well. That was gonna be, that was gonna be the next topic of discussion, um, off, off the agenda. So, yeah, there's, um, yeah, at the, at the top of our Zoom screen, looks like there's a time left counting down about six minutes left, at least to the recording. And actually, at the top of the window, I'm seeing Zoom meeting forty minutes, and, uh, so, um, I don't know if that means that, uh, we're gonna be cut off, but, um, at least I don't know if, and I don't know if there's anything that, uh, um, that maybe Tracy you can, uh, do about that, but, uh, just to be aware that, uh, we have a weird countdown timer going on and, uh, may have to make some adjustments on the fly. Um, but we'll carry on, and, uh, if need be, if, if it ends up that we need to restart the, restart the meeting and kind of get going again, well, uh, we'll try to figure that out the second time, but thanks for the, thanks for the alert. Uh, okay, and Dr. Brand, I think you had a second item after the construction, unless there's more questions for the, um, middle school construction and campus. Mr. Turner?
One quick one, the West School, I know some of the teachers are switching from West to Middle School. Will, will the rest of the space that was allocated to Wildwood stay the same, or is it gonna be a general shuffle where Wildwood is in that space as well?
Do you mean at the West, Mr. Turner, just to clarify? Yeah, yeah, those spaces will remain. The one, the one change, uh, has to do with the West and the music program that we are gonna find a, a permanent location for from music has been temporarily, uh, housed in the cafeteria. Um, but, uh, it's, it's my understanding that the rooms that have been allocated this past year for, for Wildwood will remain, uh, for Wildwood going forward. Um, and, and, and part of the balance that, um, uh, Ms. Brown LaGrande and Ms. Bissell have, um, have to be mindful of is the balance of pre-K K uh, and, and some of our, uh, uh, special education programming to make sure that we're complying with what we need to for the, for the balance of those programs. So any shuffles that are, um, going to happen are, are connected to part of that. The, uh, the second item by Ms. Rex, although, and I think, uh, um, in turn have talked a little bit about is the start time changes and, uh, moving forward into the beginning of the next school year, and as mentioned, we'll, we'll, we'll do, uh, our very best to make sure that our community is well aware through communication from multiple channels. Um, we have, uh, gosh, spent an awful lot of, uh, again, additional time with our leadership team reviewing these changes, um, and that includes both busing as well as staffing, uh, Ms. Elliott in particular here on the call has been, uh, uh, has joined me to be a part of those conversations. So um, just for the committee's awareness, we've, we've spent, uh, we spent that time making sure that everything from supervision, arrival dismissal, everything else that might have implications for the changes in start time has been considered, um, and we've, we've walked through that. So, uh, we, we feel confident again that we've it's, uh, we, we've analyzed all different, from all different angles, the implications of these changes. Again, I think we're, we're preparing for some, uh, you know, no pun intended, but a little bit of bumpy road at the beginning, uh, but, um, you know, we, we think, uh, things should settle in as they typically do. I mean, at the beginning of any school year, um, transportation has an awful lot to tackle, and there's, you know, there's new riders, there's new stops, um, and there's new, not new routes per se, but certainly the stops in those roads can change drastically. So it usually takes time. Usually, a couple of weeks to really settle in. Um, we're expecting nothing less than that as we start the new school year, but that's not, um, unusual. So, uh, we'll certainly keep the committee posted as we go forward.
Uh, Ms. Burns?
Thank you. Um, I, I know as you said that there's a lot of work that, uh, Transportation Department has to do, but um, I'm hoping because of the school start time changes, um, there'll be a lot of practice dry runs, um, of the routes, um, especially with the changing of traffic, um, you know, more traffic tho- those time of hours, I think. Um, and I'm sure it's being, sure, you know, it's being considered that, um, if we can ensure that there's enough dry runs so that, uh, if we can forego some of those hiccups, uh, by doing so, that would be, um, absolutely ideal, because I think there's a lot of um, transitions happening, um, at the beginning of next year, and if we can try to minimize, um, the, those impacts, um, to, you know, to try to capture those unforeseen things at this juncture, I think would just, um, offer our students and our families um, and our staff, um, and getting students into the classroom, uh, a much smoother, um, transition. So I, that's just my two cents.
Thanks, Ms. Burns.
I- i- if I may, and, and I agree, MJ, and, and, uh, Ms. Retro will do everything she can to make sure the routes are, you know, communicated and understood by our, um, by North Reading Transportation, but, you know, we, we do realize that every school year, the beginning of the year, it is chaotic, um, and especially, uh, you know, the first week may go okay, but then when we add kindergarten, it, it complicates it a little bit again. So it's usually, you know, a couple of weeks after kindergarten starts, and hopefully it calms down, but, yeah, we're cognizant of, of the change, and you're right, the, the traffic patterns at different times of the day and in the town uh, may have some impact, too.
I'm just saying that, you know, unlike, um, previous years, though, we're dealing with, um, you know, um, unusual transitions that we've never encountered before. So you're right, um, and, and that's, that's, you know, and I know they've taken great care uh, in, in, you know, previous years, um, to kind of, um, you know, tackle all those unforeseen things, but I'm, I'm thinking with such a huge congregation of buses coming in, going out, um, on Carter Lane, that in different times of, you know, that buses are now going.
Well, I, I'll, uh, apologize. We have, uh, an issue with our, our license here. We have many that are, the, I think it's the professional grade that allows unlimited time and not, but not all of our Zoom accounts are, so, um, apologies to the committee and to the community on the interruption here, but, uh, we, I think we've reset it, and I think that we should be able to continue on this meeting link, um, uninterrupted until the complete end of the meeting is our understanding.
All right, we'll just, uh, wait a little bit longer to let everyone get back on. Okay, I think that is, do we have the whole committee? And Dr. Bryson, okay. Uh, all right, so, uh, are there any final comments or questions about, uh, the school start times or the plans for the fall? Okay, and Dr. Brand, any, anything else to mention in the superintendent's report?
Uh, no, I think that's everything for this evening. Thanks so much.
Okay, uh, then we are going to move the, uh, middle school planning update from old business, um, pull that into our, our next item, and, uh, I will turn it over to Dr. Quirk.
I am unable to share my screen if that could be enabled.
If the host could give Dr. Quirk sharing privileges, please.
Okay. Okay, can everyone see the presentation? Yes?
Yes, looks good.
No, thanks.
If I can.
No, here, I'm here tonight to give an update, uh, middle school, um, update on if two categories really, um, advisory and, um, just an overview of, of the wind block and with the schedule changes. So at the first part of the presentation's gonna be on advisory, uh, advisory, we, was our first year this year. Uh, teachers and students were surveyed at the end of this year to, to give us some perspective. The point of the surveys were to give a high level overview, um, which would help us make changes and, um, also guide us as to what we have to deal with, uh, you know, maybe we should find, um, some more information out on particular topics. Most of the questions were answered on a Likert scale of one to five. This is important when we go over some of the, the data that came out. Um, if you are familiar with those sort of scales, uh, it's a rating scale of one to five, with five being, um, the absolute best and one being, uh, like if, uh, absolutely yes, and, and one being an absolute no. Uh, so that's important to keep in mind. Uh, the advisory team, which is made up of, uh, four staff members at Wilmington Middle School last year was Kristen Forcina, Missy Simmons, Katie Anne DeSanto, and Kristen Smith, who were great in, in developing these lessons and, and the overall schedule of it, um, are continuing to work on, uh, year two lesson development. So everyone last year did all the same lessons. The goal after the three years is that sixth grade would have its own um, objectives and lessons, and next Um, objectives and lessons and next year, so their sixth grade students would get, the teachers would repeat what they did last year. Where seventh and eighth grade next year will be moving on to the uh new year and then eventually the third year would be for just eighth grade. Um, and to also make adjustments based upon feedback. The data I have uh is is split into two categories, one with staff. So the first group of information that you'll get is is the opinions and um. The results from the survey from staff, sixty-three staff members filled out the survey. One of the questions that was asked was uh whether the staff felt that the material is easy to access. Uh, sixty percent. That comprised of of staff members answering a four or a five on the Likert scale. Um, thought that it was easy to access with thirty-one answering with the three. A three in the scale is meant that um. Yes, they feel it was easy most of the time, but maybe not, you know what I mean? So that's why I include that information there. So. Uh, overall, I would say that, you know, uh ninety-one percent felt that most of the time, um, if not all the time. The materials for them was easy to access. Forty-two percent said that the time allotted was adequate with thirty-six answering with the three. So we'll be looking into that a little bit more. Because some of them um with the three and below with uh, we found out that some of them thought it was too much time, or others thought it was a little too little time. So um, but we will be diving in a little bit more on that aspect. Fifty-nine cent percent of staff felt that the materials were important for students to know with twenty-one um percent answering with the three. So. You know, we were happy to to see those results, that most of them felt that what we were doing during advisory was important for students. Fifty-two percent of staff felt that the communication about advisory was appropriate with uh thirty-six answering with the three. So. Most of them felt that the communication was was good. You know, we do have some tweaks that we need to do so that staff is informed, because the more um. The more comfortable staff feels and the more informed they are, the better they would be during advisory. And um. Sixty-five percent of staff felt that the answers were question uh answers, the questions were answered when they had one um in a timely manner with thirty-one percent. Answering with the three. So um, you know, are my, the team, myself, as well as the team would answer questions whenever we had them, we developed a Google Classroom for staff. So that way, all the materials were in one central location and that seemed to work well as well. Now, moving on to the specific, student-specific um questions that were asked, four hundred and seventy-four students completed the end-of-year advisory survey. Um, I'm happy to report that eighty-nine percent of of students felt comfortable with their advisor. Uh, you know, advisory is a time when. Students, the point was to have smaller groups of students with adults so that they can make those relate, you know, build those relationships and eighty-nine percent answered a four or five. With eight percent with a score of three. So um, I think we did a, you know, it shows me that overall, we did a pretty decent job with um. Pairing up uh the students with their advisor uh to follow up with that. Eighty-two percent of students felt comfortable with their overall advisory group, meaning the students that were in that group. Um, with an additional twelve percent with a score of three. So I was really happy with those results too, that students not only felt comfortable with their advisor. But they felt comfortable um and built relationships with the students that were in that advisory group. Which again, you know, it wasn't that we just paired students up with friends, but we tried to, you know, we tried to um. To group students in in the best way that we could. And I think that overall, those scores show that the students felt comfortable, which is important. Uh, forty-four percent of students liked the topics that were covered in advisory group. When asked what they would uh like to see covered, um, because we did have a follow-up question. Uh, the students answered nothing or I don't know, you know, um, in retrospect, when looking at the those questions, perhaps we could have. Been more detailed in uh including maybe some examples of different things or asking about specific. Uh, activities that we did and that that could be follow-ups, questions that we dive into this summer or the uh next fall, but um. Knowing that we got a lot of the answers of nothing or I don't know, which really wasn't um. Telling, right? Um, however, the second group did give specifics and the majority of those um. Liked the more interactive activities or asked for more directed study time, which. I was happy to hear those results because with the uh, not that when is going to be a directed study, but it will help them overall. So I'm hoping that. Um, they'll see the benefit with the changes for next year with that as well. Uh, when asked what would be something they would like to keep from advisory, students answered, um, when I looked at all the data, they uh, I kind of grouped it in uh. It's a, I have three categories, but it's four. Um, friends that were either made before. The group or after, which I was pretty excited to hear that, you know, some of them had friends in the group, but then they felt. That the their advisory group became their friends, which is ultimately a a great goal and a great thing to hear. Um, a lot of them liked the warm-up or the fun or the interactive activities that we did. Um, a lot of students answered being kind, which, you know, there was a theme with some of the warm-ups and some of the um. Activities that we did. So I was glad to hear about that. And believe it or not, some of them um in said that they liked the the bullying lessons, which um. Uh, bully prevention lessons, which I thought was important to hear as well. So um, I was glad to hear some of those results and look forward to tweaking the survey again to have more of. Getting more substantial um. Information like we got out of this question. Uh, one of the culminating activities, one of those fun activities that students did, I don't know if you, um, I'm not going to show the slide, so, but I'm 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 hoping that you were able to look at it, but this was uh. Uh, the a memory book, which they did um for their own um advisory group, and it was a great way for students to kind of. As you could see there, there's the picture of the overall group, but then there was, it was a slide deck where students got to fill in their slide and um. List some um great information there about themselves. So. You know, I look forward to those sort of things. We also did like a door decorating contest and we did. Uh, different things to make different bolt bolts and boards around the building. So we're looking forward to implementing more of these sort of activities because um. It's a great way to showcase and you can, if you looked at it, you could see how much the kids really enjoyed it. One question that was um, I didn't know how this was going to turn out, and I'm glad that we asked it of both students and staff. You know, when you think of advisory, there are two different models that I've seen, you know, seen or researched where um. It's a new advisor with a new advisory group the next year. Or they loop, meaning that uh, they would have, much like our assistant principal and guidance counselor does with the students as they matriculate through the three years. The advisor and your advisory group would stay the same. Um, both teachers and students would like uh to stay on grade level. So um, meaning that the we will not be looping with the teachers. Um, we had that, you know, eighty-eight percent of faculty and eighty-three percent of students would prefer to have. An advisory group based, so they would have new advisors for next year. So we will be um. Doing that for next year rather than keeping the ones for sixth and seventh grade and um having them matriculate through. So now I'm going to talk about um some things about the new schedule to give you an update. Um, work is underway to launch a new schedule for next year. Which I'm pretty excited about. Um, we are keeping um the model of the three teaching teams. We believe in that model for the different houses or teams or however you, what word you want to, in my old um district, they were called clusters. Um, but um, that model where it's that the students have a home base of uh the core subjects of math, science, social studies and English. Typically, the liaison or maybe uh, the special ed teacher or an ed assistant would be attached to that team as well. Um. The, as I said, with the, right, uh greatly um. Daily instruction would be for the core subjects. That's where, so that's parents would be able to have that communication with the core team. They still go off team for their unified arts. But um, you know, that way they have that home base. Student advisory will also continue next year and will meet. Once every six days um in the cycle, much like it does this year. Um, here's an example of what the schedule should look like. So um, with moving world language and reading into the UA wheel, which we will get into in a few minutes. Um, I was, you know, we were able to um, typically, there would have been five core classes earlier. Now we're going to have just the four. Um, and they'll have one, that extra fifth block will be a wind block. Um. And it will be a specific time for each grade level. Um, I'm planning on keeping the uni- the unified arts schedule the same. Um, this is typically, I'm still need to toy a little bit with uh making sure. This is just an example, but right now we're looking at periods four for grade six, period five for grade seven. And um potentially period um six for grade eight, but I'm um making sure we don't want it period one or seven. Um, I've seen um and also heard from other principals that by doing that, um, sometimes um. Some kids will come in tardy or get dismissed early or, you know, just not taking it into um full um advantage of it. So. Um, it will definitely be sometime in the middle of the day um has been the best that I've seen um and the most productive. We will be launching a what I need block, and that's what win stands for. So we are going to be having this block, so the students will get what I need or what they need. Um. It will be an intervention block that will occur six, it'll occur every day and will be a regular period for those students. Um, but will also the uh, one of the great things about doing this is that. You know, prior, the, the way that the schedule worked, students that were um. On special ed plans, that all of their um services were occurring during the unified arts block, which was. You know, those students weren't able to take um. As many of the different variety of classes that um a general ed student would be able to, because they might have a learning center or they might have speech. Or they might have reading services or a variety of other services. So. By having that additional block and and most of the services or some of the services happening during the wind block as well, it's going to open it up for those students. To um be able to uh take some of the more fun classes, um for lack of a better term. Um, additionally, when we had uh world language and reading in as a core subject, it was one or the other. So um, by pushing it into the UA block, um, students will have the opportunity, if they, if they not reading on grading level. They can now still get an intervention or get extra help for that. And then they can still take a world language. So I'm looking forward to more students being exposed and having that opportunity. Um, we are still, um, just so that everyone knows, uh, the reason why we're still. It's still a little bit in the works is because we all are also having conversations um and discussions with the WTA. Making sure that we are um following the contract and and doing whatever we need to do um for the teachers at that point. As I said, world language will remain uh being offered French, Italian and Spanish. Um, previously. Uh, world language was a three, uh, wa- wa- was two years, two full years, seventh and eighth grade, where in sixth grade. They participated in a exploratory class, if you'd like to call it, just like sort of like an introduction class um for world language, and that was um. One quarter or forty-five days. Um, with it being put, which would be um. Really a total of three hundred and sixty days of the instruction for the two, for the two full years, if you want to consider it that way. By moving um it into the world, uh, and sorry, into the unified arts block. We are going to offer for sixth grade students to start the language right away, rather than um taking that introductory. Exploratory class. Um, it does still provide a reduction in time because it was three hundred and sixty days for the two years. And across, because it would be every other day, because we'd be following a blue and white schedule. Um, so it does bring it down to two hundred and seventy days, but the world language teachers are um looking at curriculum and finding ways that we could. Uh, make sure that all of the students are going to be able to um still be able to get to that point where they can take. Um, year two, if they go up to the high school. So um, we're working with the teachers and um. It also, um, one of the other issues that we've always had where it was a core subject as well, is that um. It limits the number of sections that I can have. By putting it in the in the unified arts wheel, it allows us to have a little, a few more sections. So I'm hoping. And it seems like it's working out this way, at least for the first year, that um. You know, kids are going to get, more kids are going to get their first choice of a language, which I think is important. To to realize too, where, you know, if I was only able to, for example, offer two sections of Italian, that was approximately fifty students. Now I can have potentially three or four, because there's an every other day schedule. And um. Again, more students are going to be able to take world language and more students are going to be able to get their first choice, which was um a good piece here, which I think is important to note. Uh, unified arts in general uh comprises of physical education, health, art, tech ed, computer literacy. Exploratory music, that was a change. We used to call it general music, but that's a recent change that the teachers had asked that we change it to exploratory music. Chorus, band and orchestra or strings. Um. Some of the classes were half-year classes. Um, we are moving uh physical education next year to a half-year class. Um, that is one of the changes. Um, you know, some of the changes too are um. Or do we, we had to do some budget cuts as well. And um. You know, we had to make sure that everything fits. Physical education, the, from my understanding, with DESI requirements is that we have to offer gym, there's no regulations as to how often. Um, physical education, I always get corrected by the teachers that I should, the class is physical education and the location where it is is gym. So I apologize that I said gym earlier. Um. So uh, you know, moving it to a physical educate, physical education to a half-year class still fulfills the DESI requirement. However, I understand, you know, that, well, that means less muse movement for the students. We are, you know, we do offer after-school sports, um, four days a week. We offer it twice a week for sixth grade students, once for seventh grade students and once for eighth grade students. We're also, I know Mr. Kyra, along with um. Mr. Ingram are working on, you know, potentially other things that we can offer after school too as well. Um. Wi- that would be more athletic-based or physical, physical um. Interaction-based. So um, looking forward to some of that um potentially hoping to um offset that. Um. Additionally, um. Students always choose, um, you know, a performing arts or a non-performing arts. So um, that. You know, stu- that was always the one class that regardless of whether you were on special ed or not, that we always tried to make sure that students got, so we'll continue with that as well. Um, and that students will um, you know, have choices with technology, tech ed, tech ed, computer literacy and visual art. Um. Health and computer literacy, however, um, will be two out of the three years rather than the three years. Um. Computer literacy, we're going to be looking at the program in general to see how we can update that and how that can change in the next couple of years. Um, with health, you know, we are also looking at the curriculum there. Um. I know that, you know, there's concerns with the mental health status or the 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 numbers that we're um looking at or hearing about about with students. Uh, looking at the curriculum, it's my understanding that we had absorbed some of the, some, if not most of the fifth grade standards as well. So um. You know, with that being now that the the west and the north could take that on, you know, that's going to open up some room there too within our own curriculum, but we'll be mindful of that as we move forward. Um, with that piece as well. And to wrap everything up, um. You know, we're continuing to um look at the many recommendations that came from the middle school program review with the scheduling committee. Um, as well as with um Amelie and all of their help um from the surveys. Uh, we will prioritize two areas that the advisory program will continue with the year two. And that the new schedule um will expand the access for students to get those uh still get their supports, but get a a different variety of classes. And that uh, you know, the administration and the leadership team will continue to work closely with the district administration in implementing all of these um. Various aspects. So I'd like to open it up for questions at this time.
Um, Ms. Ms. Burns?
Thank you. Sorry, excuse me. So um, I have several questions, so I'd be happy to ask a couple and then if I could reserve the right to speak when everyone else has had their opportunity. Um, as well, but um, I um, I have to say, I absolutely love um the example of the uh. Memory slide. I I thought that was a fantastic um way to utilize time and bring. Uh, just to support and reinforce the lessons learned in in that advisory block um about unity, kindness. Um, and acceptance. Um, you know what I mean? Building new friendships, building new uh rapport and working collaboratively. I absolutely love that example. Um, I I do have a a couple of questions. My most important though is um. Is the uh phys ed piece. Um, and I know you said, you know. After school doesn't work because these kids need to get their energies out, you know, during the school, and that's my real concern. Especially in this age bracket that we know, you know, in order for them to focus and um especially on their studies. Getting that pent-up energy and it's in walking between classes is is just not the same way of. Of uh letting off steam to be able to come back into a classroom to refocus on on work. And so I I do have. And so I I do have graves and I know you've done, don't let me, don't take this the wrong way because I know. The work that you've done in this plan is immenseable. But I I do really feel um as it pertains to the mental health piece that you spoke to. Along with the the health piece, which is really tied into phys ed in so many ways, that it's a vital. Piece to ensure that our students have movement breaks, you know, whether it be ten fifteen minutes. To uh run around the gym just to resettle and and be uh to be able to refocus um for. Focusing time so that they can learn and um body regulation. Um I I just think with this age bracket especially, it's essential. Um so I I would. I I would ask that, you know, um at some point um. If it could be revisited uh in some capacity or if there would be a way where the phys ed piece and the health piece. Uh might be incorporated every other week or every, you know, like, you know, so that every other. Every other uh uh what I mean every other week, I mean every alternating sixty cycles for for the whole span of the year. Um or something to that effect, uh because I I do think it's a key component to our kids being able to be ready to learn. Um especially the in the length of the the day and activities um that they do. Um just a a couple of quick questions on things. Um those that's my main, my one of my biggest concerns. Um and then two other questions I had um is the the materials that the staff felt were important for students to know. There was um a percentage that rated it a three and are you are we it you know. Not that it may be worth bringing it up, but um are you seeking out that those staff members to find out? With what their point of view was as to why um the materials, they felt differently about the materials or what aspects?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we will um thank you for those questions. The in the surveys are always anonymous, so it's not that I can ask a specific staff member or a specific student. But um you know, we will be asking follow-up questions um throughout the year. During the summer, it's awfully hard to get people's um, you know, to get a true picture. So you know, at different faculty meetings or at different times throughout, you know, I'll be asking specific questions. Uh more specifically and doing more uh maybe the thought of asking more, having more mini surveys throughout the year specifically with staff on some, you know, and with students. On some of the lower-ended um re- you know, questions or or the things that we need to follow up on.
Right. And then as a the last question that I had was that about eight percent of students who felt that they didn't identify with their advisor. How are we gonna try to target those outliers only because I worry that these are the kids that fly under the radar? Um how do we capture? How do we capture that? Not that everyone gets along with everyone, but you know, I I just.
No, I'd like it to be ideally, I would have loved that number to be zero, right? And and that's what we can shoot for. I was happy with the numbers that we got, you know, um the fact that it was under ten percent. Um but it's still an area that should be improved because the students need to feel comfortable, right? If they're not comfortable, they're not gonna be able to participate in advisory, just like if they're not comfortable, they're not gonna learn as much as they or be as successful as they possibly could.
Well, I just don't want these them to fall under the radar and.
No, again, the survey's anonymous, so it's it's hard to follow up with that. But you know, um I plan on, you know, it is something that we'll be talking with with the advisory team. On how maybe we can capture that a little earlier and need to make adjustments, you know. A lot of times um, you know, in stress that the students can always go to their guidance counselor, even if they have an advisor, their guidance counselors are there. And I can tell you that there's been examples throughout the year where students had come forward and said. I really don't feel comfortable in this, you know, just like they might say about a class. And so you know, we have to be more proactive to try because we don't want them to fly under the radar, absolutely, right? So you know, with the maybe the vehicle of the guidance counselors that we could promote that, that that could be a question that they're asking. Like, hey, how's advisory going? How do you feel in that group? You know, as they do their um. A lot of the times they'll do meetings with students at the beginning of the year um to kind of reconnect with them over the summer. So you know, I could ask them potentially, one of the things was that I was talking about with advisory team was that. We can ask them to ask that question because the kids feel comfortable with them. When at the majority of the time as well, and they're always a person that the students can go to.
Thank you very much. Um if if I could, at some point, you don't have to respond this evening. But um if we can just look at that, the Zed piece, if there's any way to. Try, I know you've got a lot of work to do and you're still honing it, but. I I just do think that the phys ed piece is such a vital piece to our, how our children learn. Um as well as their mental health and I just, I I I ask you that at some point can reconsider the. Um the current plan and see if there's a a another plan that might um uh segue better.
The best I can answer right now is that I'll 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 definitely look into it.
That's all I can ask. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Uh Audrey. Up your own, you're still on mute, can't hear you. At least I.
I didn't hear her, no.
Is anyone else hearing? I don't think we're hearing you. Let me go to Mister Turner and well, I'll come back, uh give you a chance to fiddle with your audio there. Mister Turner.
I, yeah, um so thank you very much for the updates. Very much appreciated. Um a couple of points to follow on to what uh Ms. Burns said and then and then one or two new ones. The the piece that's actually most concerning, even more than the fifty-six percent of students who said they didn't necessarily like. The advisory, all that's when you always wanna dig into, but a lot of times you've got, I ask kids, they'll always go with, well, I like lunch. So I'm not quite as concerned about the fifty-six percent, but even beyond the the twenty-one percent of staff who said middle. On is the material is important, there's twenty percent of the staff, twelve, thirteen people who said, no, it wasn't important. So even more than the three and more than and that is that bottom group that I'm most concerned with and certainly. You you're it was anonymous, which is great and you get, that's why you get good feedback. But following up with another anonymous survey and saying, you know, some people said this wasn't important. Please make suggestions for other things we can do, might be a way to capture that again anonymously, but getting that that next level of feedback on that. Um I think would be very helpful. I'm also super curious about the looping topic. It's my understanding that sometimes advisory works best with looping groups, so maybe something to track again in the future. Maybe we should start to loop and see how it goes because you can build a deeper connection with the advisor over the three years as opposed to just the one. And I get having a variety of people they can rely on and getting to the end of eighth grade and having three teachers that they have really good connections with is has a value itself, but. The the level of of relationship. And so I was surprised it was that skewed. On those numbers that they basically an eighty, ninety percent were, let's just do new people each year.
Mm-hmm.
Um and then um with regard to the phys ed piece, what I would be very, very curious about is. If you see and can survey behavior issues. For the kids that are in phys ed versus the kids that are not in phys ed for any half-year. Do you see a de- demonstrable difference of be and behavior, I mean on all scales of behavior? And so if we do see evidence that there's more issues, because they're they're twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids who. Have a lot of energy and if we see clear evidence of behavior over the first year or two. Then it's almost like we have to find a way to get it back. If we see that there isn't a behavior, I I don't dismiss the concern. I obviously, I think phys ed for that age group is really valuable, but. If we see the the issue, then obviously we have to address it. If we don't see the issue, it might be a way to feel a little bit more comfortable to your concern, Ms. Burns. Because I do share that, that was one of the things for sure. I i- it should be something that that we shouldn't see a dramatic change and oh, that group's not in phys ed. And suddenly we've got ten kids coming more per day to the principal's office than, you know, when they were in gym. I I yeah, um so that may be a way to to track. I I don't, I'm not dismissing your point, Ms. Burns, for sure. I completely agree on it. And then the last thing is, when's, when are, when are kids actually gonna get course selection information sent out for next year?
So for the course selections where they had to make a choice.
Yeah.
Some students um for an eighth grade student, for example, it was minimal, right? Because um they already had picked their language and they already um. They already knew what performing art, it's really the the two choices, right? They they're still gonna get math, science, socializing, English. Um it already went out to the fifth grade students. Uh my world language teachers prepared a a great video, if you'd like, I could share it with you where they introduced themselves. And gave a inside the, inside the presentation, there was little videos themselves of of for each of the teachers to kind of introduce to the students. Um themselves to the students and I sent it home to students and parents. And um there was a survey where they could fill out their first, second and third choice. I also use that video for the se- incoming seventh grade students or our current sixth grade students, so that went out in June. Um to get that information as well. So that's where, like, I kind of already know how many sections of certain languages I I can offer and um. You know, I I'm I'm ha- happy not to have those disappointing conversations with some parents and and students with um. You're not getting your first choice of a language. I'm I'm looking forward to more of them getting language, the world language and more of them getting their first choice.
Thank you. Uh Audrey, do you wanna try again?
But point, I have point of personal preference.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing hearing Audrey, so again um. Uh Audrey, I suggest maybe, maybe you uh drop off and try to reconnect. And uh then we'll, we'll try to try to get you on there and see if we can get your audio working.
Um point of personal preference, Dave.
Go ahead, MJ.
Okay, oh and I'm speaking one because uh I just wanted to respond to Mister Turner who. Um mentioned B in my comments. Um Steve, in all honesty, I I don't, I'm, you're not dismissing. And I don't, I'm not offended in any way, you know, um uh in any way, but I I did wanna point out. Um we, as you know, the middle school and behaviors. Are part of the reason why we're so desperate to change the culture uh within our middle school. So that learning can take precedence and so team building can take precedence and one is what, this is one of the. The drives to why um what Dr. Quark is doing such um. Work around the schedule and and building this advisory block and this wind block because there are issues, whether it be be um. The mental health of our students, whether it be bullying, uh whether it be just destruction or kids videotaping in the bathrooms, these YouTube things or TikTok things. It is going on. Um and ev- and that's even with with us having phys ed built into into the schedule this year. So those things are occurring um to to. To say that, you know, let's look how this year goes and see if we have a rate of more suspensions. Uh which means kids out of out of classrooms uh or you know, or or detentions, which again, another disruption for the classroom. It's um if we can avoid it with what we know in in just the physiology. And the research that has already been done for kids of this um age bracket. I I think it it's best to look at it now and and not have to wait um on data necessarily. To know that um movement um throughout the the school day is a benefit to a lot of students. You know, with especially in the medical field where, you know, researchers have more kids on ADHD medication than ever. Um some of these kids and I'll not to say that after-school activities. Um in athletics isn't a form because I think that's another vital piece at the end of the day, but I think some kids um most certainly. Would benefit from a um movement within their six-day schedule twice a week. Just so that focusing on lessons and multiple, you know, especially back-to-back classes, um they can retain. Um the lessons they're learning, yeah, more in and and so that's why I just wanted to. Just share a little further on that note, but thank you, Stephen.
All right, Audrey, let's try again.
Okay, now is it working?
All right.
Yay, wonderful. Okay, um so first thing, um in regards to what Ms. Burns was saying with phys ed. I remember when I was in, I think it was sixth grade, um at the end of lunch, we would have like ten minutes where we could go outside. As long as it was nice out and people would just like walk around, hang out with friends. Is and then I kind of just went away. I wasn't totally sure why. Is it possible to revisit that or is there a reason that that's gone?
Recession was um, they called it recess, that was still going on when I was first here as an assistant principal. The um the behaviors that came out of the ten minutes um that happened uh. Was the one of the reasons why we we got rid of, uh we don't have that anymore. Um you know, as well as um, you know, contractually, we have so many staff members that can help us out with lunch duty. And when you think that an entire grade goes outside potentially for ten fifteen minutes, you might not think it's a small time. But ten to fifteen minutes can seem like an awfully long time when you have four or five teachers with over, you know, two hundred and fifty to three hundred students. So um you know, there's management issues to make sure that the behaviors and then that kids are just safe in general. We had injuries and things that would go on during those ten to fifteen minutes. So um those were some of the reasons why that was um eliminated. Um or that we don't go outside and it's also not, as you said, Audrey, it's a great point and and um but it's not all year either, right? It's it's only on the good weather days in the fall and in the spring.
Um would it be possible to then do that with like a more structured activity instead of just going outside? Or is that still something that wouldn't work?
I'd have to, again, I I have no problem looking at any suggestion or um that that people, anyone brings forward, you know. But um my my objective there would just be to make sure that it's um a safe environment for students um. Physically and emotionally, right? And so that would mean staffing and making sure that we have the right equipment and whatever if we're doing things, uh you know, a structured activity outside. But um if you have further ideas and wanna email me, I'm I'm more than happy to um continue this conversation and and look at it further.
Okay, great, thank you. And then just the other question I had was um. Is it, has there been any thought given to like going back to the waterfall schedule that we used to have? Or is it still gonna just be blocks stay in the same place every day?
We are gonna maintain the stagnant schedule. Um the waterfall schedule, the way that it was, was in all honesty, very, in my opinion. And and I've heard it from um, I've seen the transition of sixth grade students who have never experienced the waterfall schedule. You know, we would have a a very, students would be very disoriented as a sixth grade student uh for a long time. And even it would, you know, from what we would see um in seventh and eighth grade, you know, it was something that came out of a change in the schedule for the, from the pandemic. Um that, you know, having that set schedule made things, you know, students knew where they were supposed to go every day. Um you know, in my previous district as a as a teacher, we did a full waterfall, right? So it wasn't just, if you remember what Audrey is referring to, is that the schedule had the first three periods rotating. So it'd be one, two, three, then the next day would be two, three, one, then three, two, three, one, two, you know. And so um and then the fourth would always stay the same and then there would be a rotation of five, six, seven um as as we moved along, you know, um. What the waterfall schedule is supposed to do is provide, uh you know, students, some students do well in the morning, some students do well in the afternoon um. Where, you know, we were going to school so early, it's uh before. Uh it's gonna change a little bit in the fall, but before, in all honesty, most of our classes were in the morning, right? Even lunch was ten o'clock in the morning, right? So um for some students. So um you know, the rotation, if if you weren't a morning student, you'd have those same classes um every morning, right? Or uh you know, if anything of uh I I would, you know, we're always looking at the rotation. If anything, I would like to look at potentially a full waterfall rather than this, the the two waterfalls that we did, which was very confusing. Not just for students but for staff, uh and I could say that for myself. Um it took me a few years to get used to the schedule with that. But we're always looking at it, Audrey, for your point.
Great, thank you.
Uh Mister Smaha.
Hi, yeah, um thanks. Um I've I've got a couple of different things um that uh I just, I have a couple of questions, a couple of things. Um first um is thank you for um for this presentation and I know that this is um that this is a lot of work. And I'm really excited about some of these changes. I think the opportunities that are gonna be offered to a lot of our uh special education students. Um is gonna be, is gonna have a huge impact, especially on, you know, the these students feeling included as part of the whole school community. So thank you so much um for uh for getting this, making this, making this happen um. You know, um one of my questions about the advisory um was, is it typically? Like I I just in that picture, um there were like seven students, is that what the typical advisory is? Is is seven students about that?
Seven, um I'd say on average, um I think the most was like eleven. It's, you know, it depends upon the, we have a set, we had a, what we first did was uh. Said these are the our seven, these would be advisors for seventh grade, you know, and we did it more for location too. Um so you know, uh seventh grade is on our third floor, so even the um. Unified arts classes that were on the third floor, those teachers were advisors for the seventh grade, right? Um so knowing the number of teachers and then also the the size of the class determine, the overall grade level, right? We took it, so I'd say the lowest, that was probably uh the lowest um is about seven or eight, the highest is maybe ten, eleven.
Oh, that's great. I think that's that's that seems like a a good number um to me. Um in terms of uh the wind block, um I had a, one of my. In terms of the wind block, I had a, one of my questions is. The, you know, the reteach and extensions activities and sort of like. Like how that's going to work, like is, do they, did this, is the wind block, is it? So, you know, I understand that's where, where students are going to get, you know, if they're going to get pulled for some service or they're going to need this, that and another thing. But, you know, most kids are going to be staying put. In, I guess in the room and is, does that teacher change every day? Is it like a rotation there or the same teacher?
So we will be going, it will change, not every day. Because of the blue and white schedule. There will be like a group, say a math teacher sees one group on blue days for a certain period of time and then one group on white days. But the, the, the change would happen, they would, they would be one of their, if they're not having a service or an intervention like. With a learning center or reading intervention class. They would be with one of their four core teachers of math, science, socials and English. Those groupings will be determined by the teams themselves, but with the guidance of myself. And I know Christine Elliott is going to be part of this with the data meetings that we're going to have. Throughout the year and the data meetings are going to be tied to like, if you're familiar, we do iReady as one of our assessments. We do that at the beginning, the midpoint and, and at the end of the year. So those data meetings will be tied to when we have those assessments. We'll also be doing one for math next year as well. And so not only would they have, you know, grades and behavior and attendance data, but now they're also going to have these benchmark data. That we can then look at and make the, the groups based upon what the students need based upon those assessments. So yes, they will be changing. I'd say probably every, if you wanted to have a number to it, maybe every seven or eight weeks. There will be a formalized schedule. And I, I could, when, when things are more ironed out, you know, we're still in the, in the process with MWTA. Trying to make sure that this is all negotiated appropriately and that everyone's moving forward. But one of the things too is that there'll be a set of less that we're working on with the, with the committee of teachers. That there'll be a set of lessons on executive functioning and study skills at the beginning of the year because all students need that, right? To, to step foot on the right path. So we're currently working on that. Again, I don't want to give too much away because it's not finalized. And I'm still, we're still finalizing all of that with the WTA and with the teachers. But I'd be more than happy to come back and give you more information when we do have that.
Okay, thank you. That's good. That's, that was, that's the part that sort of, it sounds, I mean, this is, that's, that sounds great that there's a definite. Nicely structured plan that's going to be in place because my, my worry is that. We're going to focus on all these other kids, but then the, the big chunk of kids, like, all right, well, what are we going to do with them? And that's like a, sometimes in, in my experience at many schools, that becomes like the last thought in the process. And I'm glad that it's, that, that's not, that's not the case because we really want to make it be something that's going to help everybody, right?
No, right. So, you know, with this, I think the way I present and the way I think is that something. Like the schedule, the advisory, right? I look at it in three years, right? That really it takes a first year to get over that initial newness, right? And then the second year we'll see some more changes and the third year we're perfecting, right? Next year, we just kind of want to get used to the schedule changes and this whole process. And then, you know, and we can make tweaks. I'm not saying that we have to wait till next year, right? But, you know, then we'll be looking at, so how many kids did we have where we weren't sure where to put them, right? And then what could we have? So, you know, I mean, I've seen where other schools where it's those kids can then be helpers. And that maybe an eighth grade student can be a helper and in the sixth grade because they're a great student and they get all their homework done. And, you know, they don't really need an intervention or the, you know, what I need is for them to. What they need is for them to take it to the next level where they're helping other students, right? And so maybe not this year or not right away at the beginning of this year, but I can see that happening and would love for that, something like that to happen or other ideas too.
Yeah, that's, that sounds, that sounds awesome. That's a, that's a really good idea. The last part, and I'm not going to say too much about it, but is sort of echoing some of this stuff about the PE. Stuff, you know, it's, it is, it is an incredibly important thing, especially at this age group. But I also know I've had experience in scheduling and I know that scheduling is just absolute. Crazy chaos a lot of times and trying to make everything work. And sometimes it's like, all right, I have this idea and I can make this whole thing work. Except for like, I've got 5% that can't, you know, that, that won't work. So my, I guess my suggestion or my question or, or comment would be about, you know, like, just like trying to think creatively. And I think Stephen might have been saying this as well and MJ's. Two, is just like, if, if you can't have the full year of PE, like, you know. It's finding these different movement breaks for kids, you know, through, throughout the day and thinking creatively about that. And Audrey said this, something very, very similar to that is just, is finding. You know, safe but effective ways for them to get that energy out that they need to. So, thank you.
Audrey.
Um, just wanted to comment on, so one thing, just preface this with the wind block in general, I've been following it. It, I think it has a great potential to be used really well and like the part that I'm focusing on a lot is like where students need to be challenged more. And just where you mentioned using students as helpers. Maybe occasionally, I really would push for not doing that a lot. It's something I see used a lot as. Oh, we have these students who are ahead and who are getting their work done and who are doing fine and we don't know what to do with them. So using them as helpers. We, there's always a way to challenge students more and I wish I'd had more opportunities to like kind of take stuff a step further a lot earlier on. And I can see, I mean, thinking probably more into the future ways we can use this block. So students can start in AP courses sooner if they can get some of more of the advanced level curriculum in middle school. So I just really want to make sure that this block is being utilized for everyone and giving students an extra push where they need it and.
No, and Audrey, I was just giving an example there of something that could be used, you know. One thing we have to be careful of though too is that, you know, and I, I understand your point and there, and there are ways. And I, and you know, there were students that even before we had wind block that, you know, were so advanced in math. That they had taken algebra in seventh grade while I've been a principal here, right? And they did, we did something else with, they did geometry. I know one student did geometry in eighth grade, right? And how we can expose that to more students, right? But, you know, the extension piece is a little tricky. You know, in that we, if, if we're extending the lesson, we have to make sure that it's available for all students too. So, but you know, we, we're in a point where right now, not just because of the pandemic, but there's a variety of reasons where kids need help, right? That's our primary year one, that's what we're looking for, right? I mean, all students, right? I mean, it's, they're not in the same place that they were, you know, eighth graders. You know, when I first started in, in teaching or, or even before with the administrator, right? With, we have to. Help all of our students right now get to the place where they need to be and then, you know, exploring other ways of how some of those top students can, can. Get more of an enrichment is definitely a goal across these three years. I'd say that, but our primary focus is to make sure that we're making sure that they have exactly what they need to be successful with what we have right now. If that is our first year goal.
Great, thank you. Cause I do think this is like a really good opportunity for that. And just like to give a reference point for this. I took like the most advanced level math offered at Wilmington High School right now, right? During the past week, I've been self-studying a couple of extra units because I'm not in the place where I need to be in math to start next year. With the physics classes I want to take. So I think, and that's one subject I think we're severely lacking in, in enough upper level is in math. Because a lot of schools are offering math like well above our highest level courses. So that's one I think in particular that I'd really like to see that block used.
As a former math teacher, Audrey, I couldn't agree more. I would love students to take math all the time, all day long. But that's me.
Well, thank you.
I would not go over well, but anything for math, of course.
Other questions or comments? I want to mention something and it's not strictly, it's connected to, to one of the schedule changes, but, but not really directly a middle school issue. Which is that. The, on the world language change that students are now going to have. Three, three years of world language, even though it's going to be, you know, on the unified arts every other day schedule. I, one, I'm very curious to see, we, we, we can obviously do the math and see that they're going to have fewer instructional days of language. Than they used to have, but I'm curious if having it over a broader range of time might. Ameliorate some of that, some of that difference. There's, you know, there, there. For, for, for education is not just about how much you cram into like, how many hours you cram into a small amount of time. Sometimes you do need. Repeated and lengthy exposure to things before they, they really sink in. And so I, I think that it will be interesting to see. You know, how even with on a reduced number of total days, that learning it over, over an extended amount of time. I think we won't know this for a few years, but I would be curious eventually to see how the high school feels that their incoming freshmen are prepared. In languages after this has been, been going on for a while. And, and this, the, the other comment is that I would, I would love for there to be some way to. Recreate the idea of the exploratory language before students have to make their selection. So this of course would be an issue going into the fifth grade. And, and it couldn't, of course, it couldn't be the same. They're not going to take a quarter of exploratory language, but just some opportunity. Even, I don't know, it could be an online resource. I would love for us to find some way of exposing the fifth grade students. To the three languages that we offer. You know, even if it's perhaps on a, you know, a voluntary option, just so that, you know, they have some basis for making the selection. Because I think that that was a really nice thing about the way that the system used to work is that you really did get a little bit of exposure. To all of the languages and, and then could feel a little bit more confident in what you were selecting. When you went into seventh grade and it would, it would be nice to recreate that in some fashion, even after we make this, make this change.
Yeah, and then Mr. Excellent, we, we are, we have full intention to do just that and to explore that. Time didn't quite permit as we ramp up for this change of the middle school for next year, but it is certainly something that is not lost upon. Be from Ms. Elliot and I in terms of a need to, to do that very thing. We know that the shift will have some dominoes and this is one of them for sure. So it's something that we, we will look forward to exploring with our elementary colleagues as we, as we look to the year ahead.
Okay, anything else from the committee? Uh, Mr. Turner.
Just to say 100%, please do. That was, in, in the prior conversation we had, that was one of the points I raised a bunch of times and I, I really, really do think that the exploratory is helpful. And also just as a general concept, getting it into the fifth grade in any form is, is also a good thing on its own intrinsically. So yes, please, please do.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Quark.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, that is going to bring us to new business. And the first item up on new business is the superintendent formative evaluation. So to refresh people who are not on the school committee. This year at the beginning of the year, we decided to use a two-year review cycle for Dr. Brand rather than a one-year cycle. So this, at the end of this year, we are doing essentially the mid-cycle formative review. And, and at the end of next year, we will do the more traditional summative review. One of the things that means is that we will be evaluating Dr. Brand on his goals for this year. But we will not be doing evaluating him on the standards that, and or giving proficiency rating. Which is again, something that happens in the summative review. So, so that's what we're going to be doing for this year. Each member of the committee filled out the evaluation and submitted an individual evaluation and all of those will be forwarded to Dr. Brands. So that he has the, the benefit of all of our thoughts and comments. But the committee gives one formal evaluation which we're going to present tonight. The superintendent evaluation subcommittee met last week. That is Jay and Jen and me. So we met last week and reviewed everyone's individual evaluations and averaged the ratings on the goals. And, you know, combined and took comments from here and there to, to have comments on each of the goals and overall comments. And. To refresh everyone on the goals themselves. So I'm just going to jump over into that. So Dr. Brand had five goals for this year. District improvement goal one was the development of a culture and climate assessment tool. Which the committee rated as having made significant progress. The district improvement goal number two was creating the strategic plan. Which the committee rated as significant progress. The district improvement goal number three is the middle school review, which the committee rated as significant progress. The student learning goal was inclusion, diversity and equity committee, which the committee rated as significant progress. And the professional practice goal was family, community engagement, the school community communication goal. And the committee rated that as some progress. And traditionally, we've just read, read the review and, and I'll do that to get our, get our comments on the record here. And it'll take me just a couple of minutes to, to get through this. So. Wilmington is fortunate to have Dr. Brand leading our school system. He has remained positive and focused and has demonstrated strong leadership throughout the 2022, 23 school year. His ability to manage many long and short term projects simultaneously is impressive. Dr. Brain continues to show his commitment to bettering the education of the students in Wilmington and ensuring his staff have the resources and education to meet student needs. In an ever-changing educational climate. He has done excellent work to date and we have no doubt he will continue to advance our district's goals. For district improvement goal one, the culture and climate assessment tool, we believe that Dr. Brand has made significant progress. Most of the proposed tasks have been accomplished. He was able to establish a working group that had representation from a wide range of stakeholders. And brought in a variety of voices. The survey was developed and sent out and responses have been collected. However, the results have yet to be compiled and shared with the community and the school committee. We look forward to seeing that information next fall. For district improvement goal two, the strategic plan, we believe that Dr. Brand has made significant progress. A large amount of work and time has clearly been spent in the formulation of the strategic plan. Though the process was bumpy at times, Dr. Brand and his team persevered and kept moving forward. It is evident the much thought and collaboration has gone into the work of identifying vital goals and initiatives that will give direction to the work of the district going forward. There is a clear through line between this strategic vision, the established core values and the work being completed in the schools. Such as the middle school review and the updates to the WHS handbook. We look forward to seeing the action steps that Dr. Brand and his team will develop to implement the strategic initiatives starting next year. For district improvement goal three, the middle school program review, we believe Dr. Brand has made significant progress. The review is complete. Dr. Quark has made her plan with Dr. Brand's supervision and now we're in the process of implementing the various initiatives. The major efforts for this year were implementing the advisory program and preparing to change the schedule for the 23, 24 school year. With a special focus on the new wind block. It is critical in the coming year to continue to evaluate these initiatives. Undoubtedly, some will need adjustment and we expect that Dr. Brand will provide the leadership to drive those changes. We believe that the work being done in this program review will make a positive impact on the overall school climate and culture that we have long wanted for our middle school. For the student learning goal inclusive, inclusion, diversity and equity committee, we believe Dr. Brand has made significant progress. It is easy, easy to see Dr. Brand's commitment to ensuring the Wilmington Public Schools are a place of inclusion and equity for students and staff. We believe he is increasing the district's capacity to ensure an equitable education for all students. During the previous evaluation cycle, Dr. Brand hired a consultant to perform an equity audit. This year, all staff have been involved in a strategic unpacking of the audit results and there's been a focus on discussion and training. We also appreciate how this goal is tied to the district's strategic plan. For the professional practice goal, school community communication, we believe Dr. Brand has made some progress. Dr. Brand acknowledges that he has not been able to formally pursue, pursue this goal during the 2022, 23 school year. However, it is clear that at a district level, communication is improving. This includes both general communication and in particular, the focus on positive presentation of the district to the community. We look forward to seeing continued progress on the school community communication goal. A well-fought out and executed plan will be very well received by the community and will also enhance the overall perception the community has of the district. Dr. Brand, of course, did many things this past school year other than work on these goals. He led contract negotiations, he onboarded and mentored three new principals. He developed a school budget in challenging fiscal conditions. He facilitated a change in school start times. And it is also important to acknowledge the immense amount of time and attention that the Wildwood situation demanded of Dr. Brand all year. Encompassing both the Wildwood on Carter Lane interim solution and the broader MSBA process. Dr. Brand continues to demonstrate strong leadership in the Wilmington Public Schools. He believes in building community and engaging with stakeholders at all levels. His ability to be collaborative is essential. He is open to ideas from all and is willing to think flexibly. The superintendent's job is never easy, but Dr. Brand has clearly demonstrated that he is capable of leading our school community in a direction that is positive. Equitable and focused on both the academic success and overall success of our students. So that is the committee's mid-cycle formative review. So that is the committee's mid-cycle formative review, um, for, uh, Dr. Brand. Uh, would any committee members, uh, like to make comments? Uh, Ms. Burns.
I first would like to thank the, um, superintendent evaluation committee for compiling such a cohesive and, uh, exceptional compilation of our thoughts. Cause I know there's a lot of work that goes into that, informing that. And Dr. Brand, I know, um, I, I, you know, it's, it's tough to follow up that, that report. I just wanted to, to echo, um, how grateful we are to the amount of time and work that you invest in our students and our, and our families in this community. And, uh, it amazes me. Um, and I, I've got years behind me to be able to compare it to, um, how you, you do so with, um, such a, uh, consistent. A tenor, it, it, not much flusters you, but, um, but I, I want to thank you for your commitment and all your hard work. Especially with some of the curveballs, um, that you've, uh, you know, have experienced, um, with us in this district. And, um, I, and I, you know, I, I, I know that in the next coming year, in years, that this will only, you know, you will only, um, be a facilitating factor in strengthening the education and learning of our students within our district. So I, I just, it thanks just doesn't seem to be enough because I, I see what you and your team, because I know it's a collective effort as you do everything, um, in this district. But I sincerely, um, want to give my thanks to you and, and to your team. For the collaboration and the hard work, um, that it takes to create these new initiatives and to put forth them effectively. Um, so simply thank you.
All right. Uh, so the next item is, uh, bullying plan and inter, plan and intervention plan update, Dr. Brand.
Uh, thank you. And, um, and, and thank you for those kind of comments. If I may just go back to that last item and I, I do appreciate uh, all of the work of the subcommittee. It is a pleasure working with this committee. Uh, I sincerely mean that, uh, we have a lot of, uh, a lot of important work ahead, but, uh, it's a pleasure to serve as, uh, as your superintendent and will look forward to continuing to do so. As we look to continue our, our efforts at advancing, uh, teaching and learning in the, in the Wilmington public schools. So thank you very much for that. We are going to move on to the next item and that is the bullying plan and intervention. There's a number of pieces of information, um, that are included in, uh, your packet, uh, this evening. Uh, and with me to help, uh, in support of this is, uh, both Ms. Elliot as well as Ms., um, Brown LaGrande, who's here. Obviously, as you know, our, our director of the office of student, uh, support services. This ex, it absolutely is an example of the necessary collaboration that, um, much of our work often entails. Uh, this is before you tonight, um, as it is every two years. As a school district in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are required to review and update our bullying prevention and intervention plan. Every two years, as noted, there's a cover memo that we've included, uh, in here for, uh, both your and the community's attention. And we've tried to highlight a, a number of the recommended changes that are being advanced as part of this plan. They come, uh, largely through the recommendations of our legal counsel. This is the type of document that we would, uh, would work very closely in hand with counsel to make sure that um, our plan is in accordance with the, with, with the department of education. Uh, elementary and secondary education requires of bullying and prevention intervention plans. Uh, and so I'll, I'll point that piece out. In the packet of materials is not just that cover memo, but as well, uh, the full, uh, the full bullying prevention and intervention plan. This is a document that has a lot of looks, uh, similar to our, our previous document, but we've tried to use the red line features to highlight, uh, the recommended changes that are, um, are coming forth to you for your consideration. So there's the full plan. And then finally as well, uh, there is the, uh, uh, the policy itself, which we will get to as a first read, uh, a little bit later in the new business section. But with that, I'll turn over to Ms. Elliot, uh, uh, who I think maybe have, uh, a little bit more context for your consideration here.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Um, good evening, everyone. As Dr. Brand mentioned, this is our two-year process for the review. Much of this work has been actually led by Christine Murray, who is our behavioral health and social emotional support coordinator. So she and I, um, have worked in tandem to, um, get this information out. She led the behavioral task force, who did much of the first draft of revisions as part of their, um, committee work this year to look at the plan, make any edits that they could see right off, um, went through it, um, multiple times and made some adjustments. And, um, again, it went out to council for, um, review as well. It has been out for public comment since the end of, um, May, and it's still open for public comments through the end of this month. We will take the feedback from public comment and then incorporate it into, um, the, the final draft as well, but it should, it's important to note that typically, um, so we, because of some of the, the time, we wanted to make sure that our policy, was updated as well to reflect any new changes that needs, need to happen. So the language in the policy really drives the language in this bullying and bullying prevention and intervention plan. So we will, once that policy, um, is finalized and if there are revisions made, we will then go back and ensure that anything that was changed in the policy is actually reflected in this plan as well. So just keep in mind, normally we would have this, um, completed and finalized, um, at the, you know, end of June, but because we're doing that policy review as well, we will aim to have this completely finalized by the end of August and then posted to our website, um, prior to the start of the school year. So our timeline is a little bit different this time around, but I think it's really worth taking the time to, um, ensure that, um, you know, we have really gone through both the policy and the plan carefully and make sure that the changes are consistent in how they are reflected. The memo, as, as Dr. Brand mentioned, really highlights some of the changes already that came through. And right now, the, um, as I mentioned, the, 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 it's open for public comment through the end of, um, this month. However, I think it may be worth reopening it for public comment. Once we actually have the final, uh, policy language updated in there as well. So although that's not typically how we proceed, I think it would make sense, um, to put it back out and another push to the community one more time. Once we have the final revisions in there, just to be sure that we have, everyone has an opportunity to provide input. I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Smaha.
Hi, uh, thank you. Um, my, my question, I guess, sort of, um, relates around the, the, the public comment part of this. And, you know, when I, whenever we talk about, you know, this bullying prevention, you know, it's, it's, this is a, well, we need this as a policy as it relates to schools. I think it's a bigger issue, um, you know, in, in town and the state and the country. From, you know, you know, from, from kids to adults. And so as I'm thinking about this public comment period, I'm just, I'm wondering like how much, how many public comments are you getting? Uh, like up to this point and, um, would, what are, like, I think that it would make sense for us to be thinking about other avenues of trying to get the public, um, involved in some of the conversation about this.
So I guess my. I don't, yeah, I don't know the exact number right now. It's a small number. Last time we did this, I think we had 12 people respond. Um, and I know we were, um, probably in that range or a little less than that. Last time I checked, but I haven't checked in a while. Um, I was hoping that after the school committee, to be honest with you, that might be a good push for, um, some additional participation and folks. Hoping to, you know, wanting to take a look. You know, it's a, it's a pretty, um, dense document. We tried to make it, uh, relatively easy for people to see the quick changes that we were making based on, the red lines and, you know, the red text in there. Uh, much of the comments that, um, I would say we're getting are more related to people's specific circumstances and less about the actual changes we're making in the plan. From what I've gathered so far, um, however, there are some other comments that, you know, have been really helpful as far as, you know, giving more specific examples in a certain section, things like that. So there are definitely comments and feedback that I believe will be helpful for us to really make the document a little bit more user-friendly for, for families and for everybody to understand.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mercaldi.
Thank you. Uh, I had two questions. So my first question is from the administration's perspective. What has worked well from this policy? And where do you think some items need some improvement? And if there's anything else needs to be added to it. And my rationale behind that question is since you're doing this kind of twice, you know, review once every two years, ma, is this a good time to take a step back? And kind of think a little bit more like, is this actually helping out, uh, the students and everything like that?
Yeah, thanks. I, I think if I'm, I don't know, Miss Sally, sorry, if you were going to jump in there. No, but I, I, I think, um, i- if I may ask, uh, Ms. Brown LaGrande to a- add into this, you know, she, uh, and, and Ms. Murray in particular, work very, very closely with, um, all of our principals or assistant principals, that it might be, uh, when, when situations arise. You know, they are, uh, an amazing resource that we have to rely upon and lean towards, um, to help navigate this. And they, and they work to chart the course with, um, with those school leaders. Um, so they see this on a much more regular basis. So maybe, uh, Alice, if you could comment on, on some of those questions there.
Sure. I think when I, um, you know, think back to the document that we had, kind of when I came into the district, I think they're wildly different. I think that was like a, maybe a two-page kind of summary document that really wasn't, um, outlining kind of any steps or what parents would expect. Or what the expectations of the district are in the case of, um, you know, unfortunately something that falls in the realm of bullying. I think for me, um, every time we review this document, it gets more specific. And there's other regulatory pieces that get pulled into it's, you know, related to kind of, um, expectations for students that have disabilities, et cetera. And I think having, uh, all of that information documented for both families and, uh, administrators is crucial because then everybody's on the same page in terms of what the process is. And I think every time we kind of review this, things change in the state and the expectations for what those things are change. Um, and it's our kind of grounding document for the district of a starting point. If we have a circumstance that falls in the realm of this. And I had a, a third question too. You, the other one was, you know, we'd like to see change. I, I think the thing that's difficult about, um, the policy kind of being updated or the procedures being updated every couple of years is that, um, you know, so for example, where, you know, we're utilizing panorama data, we, uh, in the, in the span of time from the last time this reviewed, we've brought on SEL specialist, things that might be existing at the time as a resource that are not reflected in the document because it's on a two-year cycle of review. And so I think, you know, it's difficult sometimes to reflect everything that's being done. The flip side is also that things that are being done that maybe need to change, if you're too specific, they would need to change in the document before you could change the practice, so to speak. So, um, I think having the document and having it as specific as it is, um, has helped the administrator. We've had, you know, a little bit of turnover at administrators than my prior, you know, five or six years in the district. Coming from different places in terms of their understanding or implementation of bullying policies and the investigation piece. So I think having a document that gets progressively more specific for families and administrators is key to make sure there's consistency in, in the way things are dealt with in the district.
Okay, thanks. And then, uh, follow-up, and I guess it's going down more the path of, uh, being specific is how, how, how does the staff currently handle bullying via social media during and outside of school? Uh, I've heard anecdotally, um, so anecdotally is emphasis here. This is pervasive in the middle school. And, um, I know there was some language in the policy about that, where if it's inside the school, uh, the school can do. I, I can do some things to address that, but I'm just kind of curious, like, what if it's outside of school and then it affects the student's performance inside school? Does the district have any latitude to help out there?
Um, so it, it's the carryover into school that is the kind of the hallmark of our authority to do anything about it. So, you know, a lot of the instances that we see, um, are kiddos kind of communicating on either social media or on video games is the other big place, kind of the chat function on video games outside of school. Where things go south, unfortunately, pretty quickly. Um, and then, uh, we, and I can give a specific example of something that happened actually over Christmas break where that was kind of going on and, you know, it, the, all by all accounts, then the information that's coming in is about what happened over Christmas break. It makes it very difficult for the district to do anything. It's not on district device. It is two students in the district. It happened off school, uh, on parent, you know, owned devices, so to speak. If there is a carryover, let's say of that kind of behavior or concern into school, then school has the authority to kind of look into that and handle it. But it's difficult when it's separate, unfortunately. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks for clarifying.
And there, there's a lot of gray too, um, is what is happening.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Um, I just had some, uh, recommendations for consideration, um, if, for you to consider. And looking, uh, I know you've already addressed the, the policy piece as it pertains to the promoting, the safety, uh, for the target of others with regards to communicating to guardians when an investigation. Um, I'll hold that, um, because I know that you're aware of it, obviously. Once the, we review the policy a little later, but there's, um, two other areas that I would like to, uh, maybe emphasize, um, and or, uh, again, bring forth for your consideration. Um, on page 10, uh, under, um, reporting bullying and retaliation. The second sentence reads, I, um, oral reports made by or to a staff member must be recorded in writing. I think it's imperative that that word must be emphasized, whether it be underlined or bolded or italicized. Just because I think it's such a vital piece. Um, I think it's such a vital piece. Or, you know, even if the sentence, um, were to change that last part, um, staff must, um, are, you know, um, if, even if you were to change that sentence saying oral reports made by or to a staff member are required to be recorded in writing, something to that effect, because I think that is such an important piece of documentation. Not to say that it hasn't been, hasn't gone on, but I, I just think documenting, um, especially in a, in a busy life of an administrator or, the, the, uh, staff member who receives the report. I think it's, it's an essential piece that can't, that can't be forgotten. And I just say that as a consideration of, to think through, think about. The other one is on page 12, um, C D investigation, investigation. Just a, a suggestion, maybe adding the district policy, which is J I C F B. As a reference, um, I know it references the, the district policy, but it doesn't offer which one. I just thought that maybe offering, uh, tagging that, that the exact policy for anyone who may want to, um, read it right off, you know, if this is, I'm sure online or even offer a hyperlink in some capacity so that they can connect and read that piece of the policy. Those were the only really, um, two suggestions I, I ask that you consider. Thank you.
Audrey.
Um, so like outside of this, like, um, the guidelines itself on paper, how is this being communicated to like students and families? Of like what course of action they can take if they need to report an incident? And is there guidelines of like, if they reach out to an administrator, like when they're supposed to get a response file? Cause I know sometimes there's been issues with that and just like getting the problem heard about in the first place. So not just on like the backend of what's on paper, but like, how is this being pushed out to students and families? So they know what to do.
So this year's, um, this was our first year of sort of relaunching the mark, um, bullying prevention lessons. And we have a set curriculum and, um, there are liaisons at every school who are, um, supporting teachers and facilitating those discussions and lessons with students. So as you saw in the middle school, for example, um, that was actually one of the highlights of advisory was, um, addressing those lessons during, um, during advisory time. So through those lessons, there are conversations around how to, uh, for students. For students to know how to reach out to adults if they are feel as if they're being bullied or if they are witnessing that. So this conversations throughout those lessons. And it so it looks a little bit different, I think, at each grade span. But and we also offered information to families, I believe, in the beginning of the year related to the. The new mark curriculum that we've been using are not new, but the revised, you know, revamped or reintroduced curriculum. And the initiatives that have been taking place this year. Am I forgetting anything else, Alice? We had Elizabeth Englander actually help with that was this year, I know. It seems like so long ago. So a couple of years ago, so not the the last revision was kind of just just coming out of the pandemic, but the one before that we. Held actually a night at the middle school where we had a panel discussion with a number of agencies as well as. School department personnel to talk about bullying. John Mottelman actually ended up coming in and being kind of the end of the night. But it was all kind of coming out of the revamp of the bullying policy that had to be four years ago. I want to say I would have to go back and check my dates at this point. Nineteen. Yeah, I think so. I would have to double check that, but. And we made kind of an, you know, we didn't want, we did not, how many people would show up to a, let's talk about bullying night. So we kind of pulled John Mottelman in. As maybe a little bit of a draw, but it started out talking about the bullying policy, the. Efforts in the district and then some resources Riverside was present as well as a couple of other agencies that support families and kiddos. So we tried to roll it into a bigger night.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation and the update. The one question, one suggestion. In terms of suggestion to follow on to what Mr. Mercaldi said. I know there might be a little bit of. Challenge with being. How you would phrase these sorts of things, but perhaps having an FAQ or a. General comment section that talks more about. Things like what about, you know, what if these sorts of things happen? And obviously you don't want to, again, there could be some difficulty with how you might phrase some things. But pointing towards carryover. Of things that happen off campus, it could be of an FAQ thing talking about it and also a general comment of, you know. Parents have an important part to play in what happens off school grounds. And that does impact all of the students in the school, both the students who might be bullied and or the bullies. So having some level of of documents that's either attached this directly or something else that that flows along with it. Might be a way to help parents because I do think there's a general. Level of question, and it also goes to what what Audrey said about, you know, how to engage the process. This is a good document. It also reads a lot like a school policy document. So people might want something a little bit lighter. And I I agree that it's it's much better than it was two years ago when or several years ago, it was two pages and. And very brief. I'm not saying this isn't the wrong thing to have here. But a second thing that might be a little bit more accessible might also be helpful. And then the question is, how hard is it amongst the different schools? Obviously, there's differences in 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 grade level appropriate. Processes and procedures, but within the different schools, how hard is it to actually know that we're being consistent? In your in your roles where you're you're coming into the schools at different points in time. And we've got the eight schools. Is it is it easy to see consistency or is it really one of those things you kind of have to look carefully forward to understand that we're being appropriately consistent?
One of the reasons we rolled out the mark lessons, the way we did by. We we appointed liaisons at each of the buildings and those liaisons went through the training together. And they sat and planned all the lessons together. They, you know, took the core lessons, they modified them, you know, for middle school, high school, elementary. And they built them together and all of the schools are using the same. Content, same, same, you know, all of the same lessons are being pushed out to students. You know, within that same grade span and those and that's the launch for the conversation. So. That was deliberate because I think there were probably pockets where they did it well in the past and it might have been more reliant on the teacher or the principal. So this was an initiative to really be district wide and to make sure that we were consistent in our approach. So I think that. You know, structure has really helped us in this past year to ensure that we are having that consistency for students. We've worked really hard on the other end with the administrators as well. I think they're probably sick of hearing me talk about a couple of topics. This would be one of them. Just because it's, you know, kind of in, there's, it's a lot of gray, right, with these these cases. So we do a lot of like talking about different. Situations that can arise and making sure that the administrators are clear how the law applies to different circumstances. We did training in the fall. We did another one, kind of a briefer one a few weeks ago. We have one coming up. In August, this one will be with actually our attorney. And my office is the hub really for making sure that from, you know, I I'm not a decision maker. I'm not an investigator. My job is to make sure that they're doing what they need to do to support kids and families during what is typically a pretty stressful process. And making sure that they're following the procedures correctly. And they use us. I think if you asked any of the building administrators, they would tell you that. That they're they're ongoing conflict with a conversation when they're, you know, having. Maybe conflict regarding kind of kids having issues or, you know, upset families totally understand that. You know, to make sure that. That the process as much as it possibly can be is positive for everybody, you know. And it doesn't happen overnight either. You know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm going to jump in here. One thing that I think is important to always recognize when thinking about this topic is the bullying has a. A colloquial definition. And then it has kind of a legal regulatory definition. And that what our, you know, bullying policy is really about is. The, you know, the legal definition, like what, you know, what constitutes legally defined bullying, you know, in in law and regulation. And our obligations to therefore, you know, investigate it according to a series of steps. That's of course why we have counsel involved so deeply. In the, you know, in the policy and the and the plan itself, you know, because bullying is not the same thing as being mean. You know, someone being mean to you doesn't, again. Except in the colloquial sense is not the same thing as experiencing bullying. And that's of course a subtle distinction. And how do we try to? Kind of get that across to both parents and students, both in the sense that. Of course, just because something doesn't rise to the level of bullying doesn't mean it's okay. It doesn't mean that no discipline can be. Can be imposed, doesn't mean that something can't be investigated, but that it's also not quite the same thing as what triggers formal bullying investigations, for example.
I agree with you. I think that that's probably one of the challenges with. You know, just kids sometimes maybe not being kind to each other is the misunderstanding around the bullying law. Either way, either a parent that, you know, wants it investigated regardless of kind of what the allegation is. Or somebody that's saying, I don't want you to do that. I'm not bringing it forward because I don't want to do that. So, you know, we have an obligation in both ways. And I think that, you know, the more education we do where we do these nights, like, for example, Elizabeth Englander. For anybody that watched, she did a whole, probably about 10 minutes on what bullying is, what it's not, and what the school districts requirements are. Which was good, I think, to hear from somebody else who has a, you know, very solid reputation as it relates to. You know, try to come trying to combat bullying in schools and, you know, the the whole mark curriculum came out of her research. So. I agree. I I think that, you know, that's a a piece of our responsibility in educating parents in the community and educators as well around that.
Dr. Brand, you want to comment on that?
Well, if I may, I mean, just generally. On this topic and thanks, Alice, for also for being here, you know, when I think back to. The last five years, if you set aside the pandemic, obviously, in the insertion of in the middle of those years. There, I I don't think that there's another topic that under. Alice's leadership and more recently Christine, that we have as a as a leadership team spent probably more time on. That and and that's what I wish that our our parents and guardians could get a sense of. As a school community, as a district. Compliance or not side, we we do have a compliance factor here, obviously, as a district like any district. I wish that you could see the amount of time and energy and effort that. Goes into on an annual basis, trying to do our very best to contend with these difficult situations. That involves training of our administrators on how to investigate properly. That involves education of our staff, education of our students. As a school community, we absolutely. Take bullying and harassment very, very seriously. We have, I think, increased exponentially our ability to 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 deal with. Not just the law, because and I appreciate Mr. Rex, though you saying so, what the law calls for, there is a legal aspect here. And we recognize all of my team members on this call. That sometimes when these complaints come forward, the outcome is not what a family might hope. It doesn't rise to the level of what under the law is deemed bullying and harassment. And we recognize that sometimes. That doesn't play itself out well in the community because people are. You know, they're they're disappointed in that. They're frustrated. Sometimes they're angry about that. But we take this very seriously. We work to the best that we can within this framework that we have. Policy and procedurally and. We'll continue to do that because we know that that's what's right for our students. And for our families. And I just, I just wanted to share that, you know, there's, there's an ongoing effort here. We're never going to stop in terms of what we're we're doing to try and increase our preparedness. And it because it's the right thing to do. And as Alice said at the outset. We are continually inserting into this work additional layers, additional resources, not just our family engagement specialists, but also the panorama data. This will be an evolving, in involving response from our district and we'll continue to do the best that we can. To contend with some challenging situations when they arise.
Thanks, Dr. Bryson.
Oh, hi. Thank you. My video on, so and just to. I so yes, to everything everyone has said, I'm not going to repeat all of these comments, but to Audrey's point. I wonder if. Some of this communication, so to to families is the sort of this missing piece. And so I understand we're doing these bigger nights or these events. But I'm wondering if there's stuff done at the building level during open houses. Or if there, I mean, I can't, I I get contacted quite a bit just to show people where this exists, where this lives. Do you know where I can find this? And so I wonder if. There's something at the, so one, is that happening at the building level? I'm trying to rack my brain. I'm like, wait a minute, in open houses, have I seen this? Have I talked to principals about that? I don't know. Or does it sit in more of these larger events where we know our attendance is? So so, right? So I'm just curious. So one, as a, if it's not happening, that might be something to sort of help bridge. This piece. That where families feel a lot more comfortable going to their their buildings for events, especially events like this potentially. Or even just capturing this at an open house where parents are there for for other things. And then you're just like, oh, and hey, why don't you just direct your attention to this or something coming out from the principal feels a little bit different than coming out from the superintendent's office? So just some some my thoughts as you're all talking. Thanks, David.
Ms. Burns.
Thank you. Just to let you know, the student handbooks have forms at the end, both, I think, I know in the middle school and the high school. On how to put forth a report of bullying. These were put, they were placed there probably. In 2014, actually, because of what, because it was even more difficult at that time. So, but that's another reference at the end of each of those student handbooks are are different forms, one of which is. A bullying report form. Which kind of outlines. The directives as to what you need to do and, you know, into submitting a report. So I just wanted to. Bring that to you, to your attention that those handbooks. Which everyone signs off on, those forms are in the back of the handbook. So, thank you.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, Jenny, you're still.
I just said, so yes, those four. So thank you. And those handbooks are really overwhelming. So it's kind of like, you know, we give people have access to it, but then. Do they really have access to it? I think is some of the points that we're we're kind of all circling around here. How do we? How do we give this to families in a way where it becomes part of the conversation? Not come if you want to learn, but. Hey, you, we all have to talk about this. We all have to know how to access this. And so pointing to the end of a 55-page handbook is tricky. Right? And unless you're looking specifically for it, I think it's kind of, but so, but thank you for making that point. Okay.
No, no, just to re-arrive, if I'm correct, I do believe it should be on the public school website as well. And but you're, I mean, that was the reason why we added him into the handbook because everyone back then. Was it wasn't digital, it was all hard copy too. But it but it was for the points that you've raised tonight, that you've all raised tonight, that. It back then, there was no way of knowing, well, how does one formally? Start a bullying investigation or report bullying. So those are just two, not that we can't expand upon it and to make it more visible. And I think you're all right. On that note, but just as. Those are two centralized areas that they focused on to so that. Parents and with a little search engine on top of it, I think. If that might make it a little easier, but yes. You know. I think cost adding cross referencing with the policy as well with the description. Especially if the those copies are now electronic. Maybe also helpful for people to link into the description of what bullying is and all, you know, every, all the points everyone made. I'm sure that we could at least try to enhance it to make it a more useful tool. And that's kind of the reason why they're at the back of the handbook to make them a little easier to locate to in that sense.
All right. Looks like we have no further comments. So. Thank you very much, Alice. And next on the agenda is the policy review for student absences and excuses. Dr. Brand.
Thank you. And yes, again, continuing our new business. So we have. Met recently with the policy subcommittee and thanks to the members for sort of joining in this effort. The the one I'll go to set a 6D first off, bullying prevention policy, just obviously in line with. What we've been talking about here and the recommendation for changes that have been captured in the document. That you'll see there, this is policy J I C F B. Again, the changes here that are being recommended are. Are, if I'm not mistaken, and Miss Sally, please chime in or else largely driven by the recommendations of legal counsel. To make some changes and adjustments to our current policy. The student absence is moving backwards to 6C, student absences and excuses. And there is a red line version in here for the committee's consideration as well for a first read. These changes largely come from a more recent update from M A S C, Mass Association of School Committees. This is a policy that has. Just not had a more recent review from our policy subcommittee here in Wilmington. And so what's before you here are some recommended changes for this. And also the intention you'll see on the bottom of the policy for some notes. After discussion with the policy subcommittee, it was thought that it might be appropriate to consider including in this policy specific notes. Or highlights, if you will, that the Department of Education has pointed out in regards to student absences and excuses. So as we we look to get back on track with more regular. Reviews of our policy bank, which is in fact what we should be doing. We did get somewhat sidetracked because of the pandemic. It's with full intention that we'll resume. These two policies are being. Front loaded, if you will, because of their timeliness. We're taking a closer look at student absences and excuses, as you know. And we'll be back later in the summer with some other procedural changes for that. And the bullying prevention policy stands in terms of the recommendations that council has suggested for us. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or if the policies of community members have any other points that you might wish to raise.
Mr. Turner.
Unless anyone else has further points, that's the subcommittee. My only comment was on the absences one. With regard to the section called dropout prevention and with regard to the the strategic goal around attendance, I do think that. Section is actually dropout procedure. More than prevention. And so I would hope that coming out of the the work on attendance, that we have a. A better gra, a better way to phrase and and approach dropout prevention. I I. Think this really does kind of walk through how you how somebody drops out. Which isn't necessarily what we. Want to have necessarily as a goal. It's certainly an important policy. You do need to define how that process happens, but. I I, when I first read that, I was confused by the title versus the text. And I know it's M A. I, 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 when I first read that, I was confused by the title versus the text. And I know it's M A S C text. And so perhaps I should go in November and complain to them. Um, maybe I will, should be fun. Uh, so just, just a quick note on that.
Dr. Bryson.
Yeah. And so to your, so Stephen, um, yeah, so just from M A S C, this is where we took these revisions from. I will say, I, after seeing your, your comment about that, I wondered if that paragraph on the second page, the superintendent or designee shall convene a team of school staff. Um, and then here it says in the third sentence, on the detrimental effects of early withdrawal from school and the alternative education programs and services available to the student seemed, it still didn't seem like prevention, but there did seem to be this piece at the end that was like, hey, by the way, this isn't a good idea, right? I wondered if, um, we wanted to to maybe go through this now and just make those, knowing that this is just the M A S C updates, but then following this attendance work this summer, to your point to come back and say, okay, wait a minute, maybe we should revise this to really talk through prevention. I don't want to call it dropout procedure. I think that's not a good idea. Um, so I think there's more work to be done. I don't know if it makes sense to do it at this moment. I think there's going to be other changes after the attendance work anyway. So my, I guess my recommendation would be to sort of move through this and then come back to it following that. But that's just my thoughts based on the M A S C updates.
This is also, uh, something that's addressed in the high school handbook and in the, in fact, much of the language is, is the same. And, uh, in the high school handbook, it's just under withdrawal from school. So there are two paragraphs that just are basically how to withdraw from school. Yet within those paragraphs, there are a bunch of essentially hoops you need to jump through. Uh, so you have to notify your school counselor, you must meet with the school counselor, you will not be allowed until you've checked out with all your teachers and then you have to have this exit interview and be given information about the detrimental effects. That's actually all, all in the high school handbook. But under a section about withdrawal from school, um, even though it seems to have, have more, more dropout prevention than what's actually in the policy right now, um, under dropout prevention. So we probably want to look at those two pieces also together, um, and make sure that there's a, a consistent message being given. All right. Any other comments about these two policies? Uh, okay, that brings us to public comment. Uh, we had no one sign up to give public comment this week. And I don't think I see any members of the public on the call right now. So, uh, that will move us into, uh, old business. Uh, we've already done the middle school planning update. So next is the second reading of the strategic plan. Uh, Dr. Brand.
Sure. Thank you again. Um, uh, before you tonight is, uh, and some slightly, uh, tweaked or updated language in the strategic plan. As you know, we've, uh, presented this to you at your last regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, Miss Elliott and I took, uh, some of the recommendations and, and, uh, uh, our discussion back and took another look at this. As noted in the cover memo, um, it's our hope tonight that, uh, the school committee will consider approving, uh, the new strategic plan for the 2000, what will start in the 2023 through until 2028 school year. Um, I will sh- share with you that the district leadership team has, uh, already began their work to dig in on identifying and, um, uh, establishing, I guess, action plans, if you will, uh, uh, that, uh, would help support, uh, both the objectives as well as the initiatives that are identified in here. Uh, it's our intention to work collaboratively with the D L T, District Leadership Team throughout the course of the summer, uh, to, uh, finalize a draft of those, um, action steps. And, um, that will culminate, we have small working teams that, um, in our D L T meeting last week, we assembled and we're going to, uh, divide and conquer, if you will, with, uh, 22, 23 members of D L T in smaller groups. Uh, we think, Miss Elliott, I think this will be a really, um, a, a, a great and very good approach to involve our school and district leaders in, in establishing these action plans. We think that it's a, a great approach. In fact, um, at the end of the day, of course, they'll be responsible, largely speaking, for leading this work. Um, our intention is to culminate this planning with our two-day retreat in the summer plan for August 21st and 22nd, in which we intend to finalize those action steps, um, and then to bring those before the committee at your first regularly scheduled meeting in September. Uh, Miss Elliott, I don't know if you would want to add anything else that I maybe didn't miss or anything relative specifically to some of the tweaks or adjustments that we made, or if you want to bring attention to the, um, the draft, uh, uh, strategic objective one, um, template that we're, we're working on.
So, um, I would just mention that, um, one of the question, well, a couple of things. One, um, you know, we did try to incorporate as much of the feedback as we received last time. However, note that some of the feedback that, uh, you as a committee provided were related specifically more towards um, the action plan and less about the initiative. So know that we are holding that information and sharing that with the working groups about the suggestions around how to um, incorporate some of that feedback, you know, that you shared with us into those action plans as well. So if you don't see it incorporated yet, know that that is still, um, work to be done. Um, I also want to speak to the, the template that you see here. One, our attempt at really reformatting this plan, um, was really, um, for the, for twofold. One, the, the, the typical grid that you see with, uh, columns on the spreadsheet with the initiative and the who's responsible and what are we going to do becomes a, a cumbersome document to work with when it's all on one page. So you can see under that we're linking action plans, um, to give us a little bit more room for specificity of what is it that we're actually going to do? Um, you know, and how are we going to measure whether it's successful or not? So, um, for the community, um, it'll allow people to be able to clearly see what we're focusing on, when we're focusing on it and, and the status of it. And also then to be able to go into each of the different links to look at the specifics of the action plan. So that was a, that's a different approach than we've taken in the past. The, one of the questions that, um, as a committee you all had for us was, will we be able to prioritize? Um, and give like a map, if you will, of what, how we're going to accomplish these goals over the course of five years. What we envision doing is, is giving you that projection, uh, in September or at the end of the summer. But then every year coming to you with a snapshot of, um, we had an anticipated completion date for this activity of this date. Here's where we are. And if you, um, I didn't print it with me right now and I don't have my second screen, but, um, you know, if, if you look at the template of, if you click on one of the links for the action plans, you, you know, the 1.3, we started to do a draft. It's not complete, but you can see that we have checkboxes next to each of the different steps so that we can clearly track what we've accomplished. Um, and then we project to be able to give you sort of a, a, um, on the surface level um, at the beginning of every year, which are the initiatives, um, we anticipate focusing on as our priority for that year by changing the, you can see the, you know, like, for example, this is spring of 2024, we anticipate that 1.3 will be complete. Um, and we would, you know, be able to give you sort of that snapshot of where we are with all of the different initiatives, which ones we've already completed, which ones are in progress and which ones are not yet started. So we're hoping that that structure will, um, provide a little bit, um, an easier read for those, uh, taking a look at it and trying to get a sense of where we are as a district.
Dr. Bryson.
I got in there first. I'm very proud of myself. Um, my, I love it. I think it was, I think you made some great, um, revisions, edits. I really appreciate the, the, uh, action step chart to give us an idea of what to expect. I think that's really helpful. My only, um, my only sort of, I was taken a little aback with 3.3. And I'm trying to recall the conversation around that. So we, it's establish ongoing processes for recruiting, hiring, retaining and advancing, and it's changed to highly qualified staff. Um, instead of with diverse staff as well as, and here's the part that I'm a little bit like, ooh, I kind of wanted, I wish we had held on to this. As educators with strong equity commitments, understanding and skills, I just don't know if strive to hire highly qualified staff that represents the diversity of the Wilmington community is really getting at that same notion. So it made me feel like that was a pretty significant change. It's, they're two different things unless we're saying like anybody highly qualified also has strong equity commitments, understanding and skills. And I just don't think that that's, we, I just don't know if that's where we're at at this point. So I would be hesitant to change it because I do think it actually really shifts the entire, um, the entire initiative. So I don't know how others feel about that, but that was my only, um, question or hesitation.
So I can respond to what, uh, the rationale for the change. And I think, um, David Ragsdale made a comment at the last meeting that, um, that we weren't, that, that it was, um, turning, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it was more about that we were looking to have highly qualified staff as part in improve that general process overall. But also, um, ensure that we're hiring diverse staff that are representative of our community. But, um, if we've misinterpreted or if that wasn't the.
I, I think to put words in my own mouth, um, I, I just had noted that that was the only place in the plan where we had talked about recruiting and retaining and advancing staff and that, uh, and, and that we hadn't also addressed more broadly that that's something that we wanted to do on just measures of high, highly qualified and excellence and not only mention, um, the issues of equity and diversity as our criteria for hiring and retaining and advancing staff.
Are there suggestions of other ways that we could incorporate that somewhere else? Or rewarding that to be a better fit for what the.
Uh, Mr. Turner.
All right, um, uh, first, first of all, I, I agree with Dr. Bryson. Um, and I, and I understand where you're going with that, David. So I, I do think there is, e- either it's a matter of simply splitting it or or going towards a, a combination and the bit that was struck, um, bringing it back more or less as it was, um, or conceptually. Um, I mean, striving to hire high qualified staff that represents diversity, period. Um, I, I, I would, I would hope our, I mean, Wilmington is not the most diverse place in the world, so I might hope our staff actually is a bit more representative of, of Massachusetts or, or the, or the United States. Um, so, uh, yeah, reverting to most of that piece that was cut out might be significant, might be sufficient. Um, and I, I don't disagree with the highly qualified staff because I, I totally agree with where you were headed with that, that point, David. That, you know, talking about the type of people we want to hire and including that um, as part of the goal is, is good. Um, as a side note, thank you very much for putting in the action plans. Um, the only question I would ask is, is whether or not there's interim goals on the main cover sheet you have and deadlines. It, it, do we need to have the deadlines that are tracking? So if somebody looks at it halfway through, they know, okay, these pieces are done. Those pieces are still to go. I don't know if that level of detail is appropriate or not. Um, but that was just a separate point, but.
So if I could respond to that, the, the action plans will have, if you will, like checkboxes so that as we're going through and we feel like we've actually really accomplished part of the initiatives within that action plan, we can, we'll be literally checking those boxes and those will be linked, live links that people can see. Um, and what I anticipate bringing back to you is, you know, um, sometimes the best laid plans, we got three quarters of the way through and you can see specifically which steps we got through. Um, and at the end of the year, we can summarize, however, we did not quite complete this bullet and this bullet, and we'll be bringing those back next year. So I'm hoping that gives you sort of a, a live, um, you know, real time um, look at, uh, the progress along the way.
Mr. Smaha.
Hi, thanks. Um, again, I really appreciate the, um, the update um, on the bottom of sort of restructuring it for the format that makes, it just, that makes more sense, um, to me. Um, the one part of this that I was and I sort of thinking about this discussion because that struck me too, as I read it, you know, that 3.3 with the stuff that was removed. And, and I think that, I mean, the, um, what do you call it? The strategic objective um, that's above it is about equitable and inclusive schools. So just hiring a highly qualified staff, I don't know if that's meeting, I don't know if that fits into three. I think maybe the way it was written before might fit better into three. Uh, and that perhaps this idea of hiring, um, you know, highly qualified staff might better fit, you know, under, uh, you know, under one, which is students reaching their fullest potential. Um, I don't know if, if that might get at sort of what, um, what David was, was getting out of, of saying from what I understand is we need to have something about highly qualified staff, but we also need to have the stuff about, um, you know, hiring educators that, um, are diverse and, and have a sort of that equity and diversity lens. Um, I don't know if that makes sense.
Uh, Ms. Burns.
I, um, I, I too have to agree with, um, the original language, I think, was more concise with what the initiative is proposing than the, than what was it, than what it is now changed to. Um, um, but, um, I, I do, whether or not we have to, you know, do a little wordsmithing to encapsulate that. And so it's concise and understandable. Um, I'm, I'm open to, I think we have what we, we have the component, components we want to use. We just, we need to formulate it in a way that is more, I think, more concise with what we want to s- see, the true statement of that initiative.
Dr. Bryson.
I, I just want to, I've just played around a little bit with the language, just to sort of, I think that highly qualified does mean with strong equity commitment. Those of us like preparing teachers, that is a part of, that is what we're doing. So I don't think it's separate. I think that it's, it's the same, but I think to not include that equity piece is a mistake because I think then I just think that can be a mistake because not all teachers who are coming, who are interviewing can necessarily respond to that, those equity questions, the way others can, right? So it's sort of, so I would just say somehow highly qualified is this, we're not saying it's not the same thing. We're just saying to not at this point in time, specify this equity commitment is a mistake. So it needs to be somewhere. However, I think you all think it sounds best, but I just played around with it a little bit there. Um, I'm, the diverse staff, yes. I don't know how, I don't know where that fits. I'm not sure how to kind of fit it in there. Diverse and to Stephen's point, like the Wilmington, I'm like, okay, you know, I think we'd have to then change that, um, because we, we want more, we want more diversity than what we are seeing. Probably even in our student body is what we would hope to achieve, although we know that that's very, very difficult. So regardless, I would do something along those lines.
Yeah. And I, I want to clarify again that, uh, that I didn't object to the phrasing that we had before, and I only thought it was incomplete as just a an overall plan of recruitment and advancement and retention. And so I was looking to kind of a yes and rather than, uh, no.
So just if I may, so are, are, uh, is it a sense of the committee to embrace or to support rather, uh, Dr. Bryson's proposed language? Is that what, uh, is that what the suggestion is for 3.3?
I'm in support of Dr. Bryson's suggested language. So I think it's closer than what it is currently written.
Uh, can, can you read your propose, proposed language? Can you, um, state what you're, what you're proposing? We, um, amend the plan for with.
Me or MJ?
Yeah, uh, you, Jen.
It's your language, Jen, not mine.
Talking about Dr. Bryson's lan- language. What is Dr. Bryson's language? Can you data for us?
So, as recorded in the chat, I don't know if this is final. This is just me playing, just, but establish ongoing processes for recruiting, hiring, retaining and advancing highly qualified staff with strong equity commitments, understanding and skills.
Mr. Turner.
And I, I, I very much like that sentence. I think it, I think it gets to the point that we were making about the first part. I do like the idea of leaving most of the, the added sentence of strive to hire highly qualified staff that represents diversity as a, as a final sentence. Um, I, I think that's, I, I think that gets to the, the purpose of it. I think that's, I think that gets to the purpose of it being within three as well as the the teachers that understand it and teachers that are it. I think it's the two sides of the coin.
I mean, could we just, could we just alter it to say highly qualified and diverse staff with strong equity commitments, understanding and skills?
Yes, that would work for you.
All right. So the so the whole, the whole line together would say establish ongoing processes for recruiting, hiring, retaining and highly qualified and diverse staff with strong equity commitments, understanding and skills. Okay.
That sounds, that sounds reasonable to me if it does for the rest of the colleagues.
All right. Sounds like we have new language for step.
3.3.
3.3. Uh, Mr. Turner. And yeah, your hand just went down. Okay. Other other comments about comments about other parts of the strategic plan? If we see, if we don't have any other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion to approve the strategic plan with the amendment with the new language that that we just stated. Motion by Dr. Bryson, second by Ms. Burns. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor? And that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much again for everyone in our community and as well as on the district team who spent so long and so much time and effort working with stakeholders and putting together this plan to guide us for for the next five years. And and special thanks to Mr. Turner and Dr. Bryson for being our representatives from the school committee on the stakeholder group as well. All right. Subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? I mean, we already know the policy subcommittee met, but we've dealt with that. The superintendent valuation subcommittee met, but that's already been addressed. Anything else? Okay. Correspondence?
None this evening.
All right. And that leaves us with future committee dates and notable items. So have a nice summer, our first school committee meeting of the next year, August 23rd, regular session. We are also going to be looking into doing a retreat slash workshop for the committee. Hopefully sometime in August. So keep stay tuned for more information about that and possible possible days and scheduling and so forth. So there was, there was some interest in in doing that. We haven't done something like that for several years. And so I think it would be be a nice idea to to get together and do that kind of, you know, team building, set expectations, you know, be have get have a chance to not just be in the work, but to kind of take a step back and think about the work and how we do it and how we how we try to be an effective committee. So stay tuned for more information about that coming later. And then we have the first day of school, August 30th for grades one through 12. And then the following week, the first day of school for the Batwell on September 5th and for Wildwood on September 6th. And it's hard to believe that we've gotten to the end of another school year. Just last week, we finally finally put a cap on the 2022 23 school year. Yes, Ms. Burns.
Miss Dr. Bryson kindly reminded me just as another plug that if you haven't already done so to, I would strongly consider registering for the M S E conference in Hyannis in November. It's a great learning opportunity and professional development for our school community members. So I just want to, if anyone has any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Mr. Turner went last year as well. I think he found it is what beneficial. I think it helps helps build a stronger foundation to stand, you know, to serve in one seat and to be aware of all the issues and impacts that public education is currently under, especially in the Commonwealth.
It was a fantastic experience. I'm certainly trying to figure out how to attend again this fall because I really did enjoy it and really would like to go back. So my intention is to, I need to work out a few details.
And the sooner you register, the more likely you are to get a hotel room at the conference center.
Which is a good, good, good thing to do.
And it's a discount discount to the district as well. If you register, I think before July 31st, if I'm correct. So.
Right. All right. Well, we we wish all of our families and students a restful summer and we will, we will see you next year. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Motion for Ms. Burns. And uh-oh, no, no hands going up to second. Oh, we're stuck here. Dr. Bryson, all in favor. And that is unanimous and we're adjourned and everyone have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Take care.
Bye bye.